Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Angela Wilcox.
Here.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we will, can everybody hear me okay? We will begin tonight with my report. I will keep it pretty brief because I know we've got a lot of folks here. So first, I just wanted to welcome Dr. Hunt to his first meeting here in District 220.
Welcome, welcome.
Looks like you have quite a crowd. This is great. So just a couple of quick things. I've been watching the construction updates. Hopefully, everybody else has been able to watch them. A lot of fun things that are happening as we have our construction underway at Station and Prairie and at Grove. I also know that on June 26th, we had that Dreamway ceremony. So we'll talk about that a little bit later when we get to our reports. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that I had the opportunity to visit the Boys and Girls Club of Dundee. So I visited their facilitator, facility last week. And I'm looking forward to visiting Sunny Hill operation in the, in the fall. So, I don't want to belabor. We've got a lot of people signed up for public comment. I think I counted 49 folks that have signed up. So team, so board members, that is two and a half hours if everybody takes three minutes. So I just want to make sure that we're aware of that. And we typically end our meetings at 10:00. So I wanted to just ask if we're okay to go ahead and start with the public comment? And then just assess where we are to see what we can accomplish. I think we've got several timely business items that we need to get to tonight. We've got a hearing that we do need to stop. Public comment at 8:00. Hold the hearing and then we can return to public comment. But we do have to hold that hearing, hearing at 8:00. That hearing will have public comment, but that public comment will be centered around that, the use of those funds. Only, okay? So I want to make sure everybody understands that. We'll start the public comment. We'll take a pause for our public hearing. And then we will return to public comment. And then we will get back to our agenda items. And hopefully, we can get to everything. But if we cannot, we can discuss as a board what we can, what we can move off. Okay? And then just as a reminder, we agreed that we were going to talk about COVID protocols today and give direction to Dr. Hunt. And that depending on that direction, we may call another meeting. So we'll be thinking about that as we, as we go through and hear the public comment as well. That that might be a possibility, depending on the direction that we decide to give to Dr. Hunt. So that's what we agreed to, I think it was two meetings ago. So any questions or comments on how we're going to proceed here going forward? And just one quick update. I am wearing a mask. I'm not trying to make a statement, but I have an immune compromised family member. So I need to, to mask up. So, all right, any other questions?
Sandra, I think the only thing that I would bring up is just can, I assume that most of these people are here to talk about the COVID protocols. Could we move the proto, or COVID protocols, understanding that there's also the, the hearing? That we have to, you know, have in a certain time. But can we move up the discussion for COVID protocols just so that we can, you know, address that?
Melissa, make sure we can get this meeting conducted. I, I want to make sure we get to the urgent action items though. Angela, that's my only concern is that we, we met. Public comment hasn't started yet, please.
I think we're all understanding that we're in, we're in for the long haul tonight. So we'll get to what we need to get to, but I think public deserves to hear us discuss.
We could go right into, after public comment is Dr. Hunt's report. We could go right into the discussion item at that point. If we have four, four.
Are more board members going to?
I will certainly second.
So we could hold the COVID protocol discussion after the superintendent report?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
I think we need a boiler at our buildings. You don't want to let the boiler not happen tonight.
As long as the board is willing to stick around and make sure that we get through the other action items that we have to get through. So I heard four people.
Yep.
So we've got what we need. Okay. All right, so we have come to a portion of our meeting where we set aside time for public comment. We value your thoughts and opinions in accordance with Board Policy 2230. We ask that you state your name, your elementary attendance area, and your relationship to the district before beginning your comments. We also ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. And Janine will remind us of our time with the bell. While this is not a conversation, if comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Hunt to follow up and report back to the board. Please refrain from directing any comments to any individual or staff or community members. And in order to have as many people as possible, this important, important thing here, in order for as many people to speak, if someone else has spoken and represented your views already, please feel free to stand and show your support of their ideas or clap. Instead of you taking even more time if you're repeating the same things over and over again. So I just wanted to stress, we do have some things we need to get to this evening, so. And we will talk about this as soon as we, we'll get to this discussion topic, as soon as we finish the president's report, the superintendent report. All right, first, are we ready? Okay. Kelly Dipman.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
No.
It should pick up your voice once you start talking.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Perfect. Well, hi, Kelly Dipman, new to this and excited to be with all of you. Recently moved back from Iowa and new to the area, a North Barrington resident, tech executive, and a passionate mom for all things education. So thanks for having us. Thank you. I'm here as an interested citizen and taxpayer for District 220. So first off, we've had a lot of caffeine today and we want to give a big thank you to Dr. Hunt. Dr. Hunt, we're thrilled for your leadership. You have an impressive background coming from a couple of states over. So thank you so much. And we look forward to working with you and advancing education outcomes here in the community. I'd like to talk about two areas in particular. One, a voice of the community, and two, unmasking our children. First and foremost, voice of the community. We've had the opportunity, quite frankly, and you can see here as evidenced by the group in this room, a lot of us have been spending some quality time outside of this room, talking about the needs of our children. You know, one of the pieces that, one of the leading concerns amongst Barrington residents is the issues around education of our children and quite frankly, some of the governance of District 220. And what I mean by that is that many parents and taxpayers feel that there's a lot of decision making amongst administration, state agencies. And quite frankly, we want to be a part of the solution. So we're here, we'd like some more transparency on how we might get involved in some of the subcommittees and how we can help drive through statistics and data and research, you know, driving some of these pieces forward. Second, masks. Boy, I got to tell you, from a personal note, my husband and I, we have been spending some quality time really grappling with the decision for our son. We have a six-year-old son and based on his well-being, based on his behavioral needs and quite frankly, health needs, what are we going to do in the future? And, and a mask has not been a good situation for him. You know, as it relates to today's, and again, new at this, we talked a little bit about COVID protocols, right? And I was under the impression as a citizen that we would be voting tonight. And with only five and a half weeks until I have to make a decision with my husband about where my son should go and how we might make that the best path forward. Sandra, a question for you is around, how are we, how are we enabling a voting opportunity so that we can gain clarity in those decisions?
So this is not a dialogue? So we will be addressing that when we get to the discussion.
You know, and I, I can appreciate that. There's a little bit to that, to that end. Part of this is a critical component. And, and part of my comments are going to be around asking some specific questions. You know, Sandra, or Barry, Angela, Steve, Erin, Leah, Katie, where do you stand on masks? Are you for or against them?
We'll find out when we get to our discussion. So next up.
Do I have more time?
Nope, she rang the bell.
Got it. Well, thanks for having me.
Thank you so much. Leonard, Leonard Munson?
Hi, I'll make this quick. My name is Leonard Munson. I've been, I have a 14-year-old that goes freshman to school this year. And I just, you know, my first impression is you're going to brief the protocols, the COVID protocols. And as you can see, we haven't had a voice in this at all. And you're going to brief the protocols, which I think is ridiculous for the board to do that prior to even hearing public comment. I work in a healthcare environment. I work with 700 residents that are over the age of 80. So I wear a mask and have since March, eight to 10 hours a day. But they're an at-risk population. We do not have an at-risk population, so they should be. We have to be logical in this process. And you guys have already robbed our children of a year of education in the classroom. We voted you guys in for a reason, so I ask you to be a leader among the community. You've got a tough job as your first day here, but I ask you to be a leader and understand the protocols for our children and where they should be. I'm not a ma, I'm not an anti-mask person. I respect your right to wear a mask because you have someone that's compromised, okay? 100%. I salute you, okay? But there's not a person here that doesn't take their children to Costco, to a restaurant, to Jewel, and is already participating. So there's no reason for our children to be masked, that's the first thing. They should be at five days of school, okay? There should be no three days a week, two days a week, one day remote. Remote learning is garbage and you know that. Follow the science. There is no reason our children should be remote learning. If you want to look at the research prior to the COVID hysteria, we wanted our children off of social media. You forced them onto social media. So I want that removed. The other thing is testing. It is my right as a parent to not have my child tested. My child should not be tested at the age of 14 to go to a Barrington school that I pay for. Because you certainly didn't subsidize me for not sending my kid to school. And you say that the electronics cost more. I don't buy that. I mean, I'm sure you have the data and you could probably prove your point. But I want my kid in school and I don't want him tested. If I want him tested, I'll take him and get him tested. There's all kinds of statistics out there. I bet the majority of our school has already had COVID. And that's probably not been tested because most kids were asymptomatic and didn't even know they had COVID. So they didn't even get tested. And we're not accounting for that. And if you want to have your child vaccinated, I support it 100%, but my child should not have to be vaccinated nor should he have to carry a card. And I'm sure that my time is almost up, so I won't go into any stats. But I just want you as a group to be leaders. And I think that you need to hold off your protocol recommendation until you hear all the public comment. And I don't understand why you'd even have it. I know that Illinois, that's my time. Thank you.
We can pass them out for you, so you can start.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. My name is Karen Kroll. I have an entering freshman at Barrington High School and a 10-year-old at Rose. And again, I just don't want them segregated for kids that supposedly get this experimental vaccine to have to keep masks on, or they get to take them off and then the ones that don't. You know, I really don't want to put this vaccine in my children. So it is an experimental drug and it is against the Nuremberg Code to actually vaccinate or force, coerce our children into getting this vaccine. And to ostracize them from certain activities because it still is very experimental and that's very scary to me. There's tons of terrible side effects that are happening. Children have died. And there's over 450,000 adverse reactions in the VAERS that have been listed. So it's, it's myocarditis, you know, the heart inflammation, the, the blood clots in adults. I mean, it still is very experimental. So, you know, what worries me more is, I mean, my daughter's on POMPOM, so she's already gets to practice without her mask on. That's wonderful. But the 12 and under that aren't even eligible for this vaccine, which I wouldn't give them anyway, they have to wear masks all day. And that's awful for such young children. I see them driving on buses with their faces covered and it makes me want to cry. I mean, this is not freedom. And they're at the lowest risk of actually getting, getting hurt from this. There's a 99.997 percentage rate for them to be okay. So let them breathe. Let's practice, you know, extra vitamin D, get them some quercetin, zinc, and, you know, let them breathe and be free. I mean, that's my biggest, you know, this, this is disgusting too. I do want to say something very quickly about this. Yeah, it can't happen. You guys, I mean, I love that you're allowed to, as the district, to make the decisions for us. I mean, there's been so many schools that have gone mask optional. That's what I pray for our children to be mask optional. And this. I can tell my kids too that this is, you know, inappropriate or whatever, but I can't undo a vaccine that is being mandated or better never be mandated, I pray. Okay? That's my biggest fear as a mother in this district. Okay? So please, please, please keep our children free and mask optional. That's my prayer to you. I'm going to give this for you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Atterberry. I'm the president of the Barrington Education Association. The BEA would like to take this opportunity to welcome Dr. Hunt to Barrington 220. And we really look forward to working with you. We know you've done your homework by watching board meetings, visiting the schools, attending meetings, and speaking with staff to prepare for your transition to Barrington. We appreciate all you have done, but we know coming to a new district is so hard with so much coming at you. And we know that there's still more, more for you to do. Understanding our past will help you to problem solve in the present and plan for the future. First and foremost, you must know that we have the most amazing group of staff eager to serve students each and every day. They're always learning, happy to discuss, defend, and develop their craft. The level of collaboration and collegiality is unparalleled in Barrington. Now, we would be remiss not to mention how important our parents are in working hand in hand with us to make sure that this is the best experience for their kids. As a staff, we feel very supported by parents and couldn't do the work we do without them. Finally, our students. They're enthusiastic and innovative. They come with a wealth of background knowledge and a love of learning. We encourage them to think out of the box and take risks. They bring the joy to our day and we, they are the reason that we do what we do. While all of Barrington schools are amazing with a proven history of excellence in academics, as well as a commitment to meeting kids' social, emotional needs, they each have a unique personality. And that is what we would like to address tonight. We would like to share with you, Dr. Hunt, some of our traditions, strengths, and history so that you might have a better picture of each school's personality. So let me start with Rose. We love that we have a diverse student population with approximately 30 languages spoken by our families. Teachers and parents work together to celebrate this diversity with multicultural events. Our librarian includes information on various holidays in our morning announcements and gives book recommendations to our staff. By learning more about one another, students learn to appreciate the differences we have, but more importantly, see how much we have in common. Another thing that we are very proud of at Rose is our fifth grade musical. Rose has a long history of performing in a lab or production, complete with head mics, lighting cues, costume changes, and choreography. Countless hours go into this production. This could never be achieved without the help of the parents to build and change sets and sew costumes. This is such an important part of being a fifth grader at Rose that we are proud that we did not let the pandemic hinder this transition, tradition. The Rose staff looks forward to having you come and visit to learn more about our amazing school. Thank you.
Marcia, Marcia McClary?
Hello, everyone. I'm Marcia McClary and I've written you all a bunch of emails. So I will try not to repeat everything in my emails. Welcome to Dr. Hunt. It's a tough time to join. And I appreciate the tough position you're all in with the guidance just coming out and everyone needing answers and the staff how to plan and prepare for the schools this year. I did want to highlight that I sent you an email you may not have gotten to of the 21 districts I knew of as of this morning in the state of Illinois that had gone and made local decisions away from the ISBE and IDP agent CDC guidance. And one of those, one of those districts is Oswego. It's consolidated, it's very, very large, and it is a suburb, includes suburbs of Chicago. So I thought that was a relevant benchmark that they might have answers to. I know there's some questions about legal aspects to all of this. And I think that you could reach out to any of those and find out what they're hearing and why they made those decisions. And they have publicly announced some differences to the guidance. Now, there are varying differences. Some of them talk about masks. Some of them talk about quarantines. Some of them talk about contact tracing differences. Some of them say they're not going to do the testing. So it, it varies. But the point is that they are doing it different than guidance. They've obviously gotten some type of legal read or decided that that's, that's their decision-making authority. And I know that was a concern of the board. I heard it from a lot of people. So I just wanted to address that. I also wanted to read a couple of things from my email that are, I think are really important for where we're at. And I would ask you guys to consider these in your discussion. If COVID were to start from today with the latest data and science, including the fact that children are more likely, three to five times more likely to be hospitalized or die in a car accident or drowning, risks that all of the parents here take every day, and we know that, is this something we want to continue? Knowing what we know today, would we newly start quarantining healthy kids? Would kids primarily just in the school environment, wear a mask but nowhere else? Would distance, we distance kids only in school, nowhere else? Not let them sit by their friends at lunch? Or are we simply having just a hard time making decisions and making changes? D220 is looked at as a leadership school district in this state. And I think we can answer those questions and really look at the data and science and say, the answer is, I think that we just need to make a change. The other question I have to ask ourselves is another difficult question. If we were to continue any mitigations, what are the specific metrics exactly to restore all of the freedoms that we can't do today? Why is that? What is the data we want to see? We have only had one positive COVID case in summer school, according to the COVID dashboard by D220. One, in summer school. The kids are all running around unmasked. We've all seen it. In school, they might be masked except for sports. We have allowed them to unmask optionally for sports and most of the kids, as you probably observed, are not masked. And we've seen one COVID case. So I just ask you to consider all of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marcia. Okay. So just to make this maybe go a little bit faster, I'm going to call the next two. Barb Floyd, and then after Barb is Dani Olson. From Barb.
Hi there. I am Barb Floyd. I am a resident of Barrington 220. I have taught in District 220 for, this will be my coming 32nd year. I was at Countryside for 30 years and last year was my first year at North Barrington. And tonight, I am representing North Barrington School. So, Dr. Hunt, tonight is your first board meeting with many more to come. And we feel so lucky that you are the one. North Barrington also welcomes our new principal, Dr. Lisa West. We hope you know, we feel blessed that District 20, 220 only hires the best. We welcome you both to the Barrington community with open arms. You'll see that North Barrington is filled with so many charms. We've got dedicated, professional, talented teachers and staff that go above and beyond even without an ask. We created a wonderful, we create wonderful learning opportunities for each little mind and a better school you will never find. It wouldn't be possible without the support of all of our great parents and PTO. We all invest in our children because we believe in them so. We work well together, hand in hand, which makes North Barrington oh so grand. Cold pride is all about trust and making pride, taking pride in ourselves, learning why and how to make good choices, and discovering the importance of finding our very own voices. We all know North Barrington is a special, one-of-a-kind place. We've created learning environments where children feel safe. Our building has an elevator and two floors. There's a new gym floor and the children love to do a layup and shoot and score. Home of general education, full instructional and Chinese immersion, each classroom is unique with their own teacher's conversion. There's drama club, running club, student council, and more. But the best is our outdoor learning arena with nature galore. Playgrounds and gardens where life is so sweet. When you come to visit North Barrington, you're in for a real treat. So welcome home. We're very glad you're here.
Thank you.
The teacher in me is just going to take one minute to say, I am very proud of District 220. And I am so appreciative of the tender care that all of you Board of Ed members made in making decisions to keep our children safe, our community safe. And you have very dedicated teachers that many of you might feel that your children have missed a beat in this last year. And yes, there have been a few little holes. But I'm telling you, the education has been exceptional. And I will speak for kindergarten only, myself, and Chinese immersion. I feel that our children did not miss a beat and I am so proud of their perseverance and their ability to learn in a whole new way. Thank you very much.
So Dani Olson is up next. After Dani is going to be Becky Riley. But I'm going to need to ask for people to be respectful and be quiet and so we can hear the public speakers, please. I don't want to have to use the gavel in the middle. Okay, thank you.
Well, it's my first school board meeting and it was great to see everybody stand and do the pledge. So it's a great sight to see. Olson, I'm a proud father of three children that go to Roslin Elementary. This year, I have a fifth grader, third grader, and kindergartner going. My wife and I also attended District 220 schools from kindergarten through senior year of high school. When my wife and I got married in 2010, we moved to our hometown to raise our family. We are here today to join the pleas of so many of our fellow parents to end mask mandates for the upcoming school year and to make sure that unvaccinated adults and children are not discriminated, discriminated against in our district period. We all know that children's risk of contracting or spreading COVID is negligible. Summer school cases have been extremely low despite Illinois entering stage five and being fully reopened. Illinois residents have been moving out, about, moving out and about maskless in virtual areas of life. There's no logical reason required masking in a school setting. Vaccinations have been readily available for any and all adults who wish to receive them. For many who have not, they have religious and/or medical reasons for not pursuing the vaccine. Ending the mask mandate will not stop those who wish to continually mask from continuing to do so. Medical discrimination cannot be tolerated in our district. The psychological effects of separating the vaccinated from the unvaccinating in the school setting will be profound. It will open up new opportunities for bullying and ostracizing children based on their private medical history. The Illinois State of Educate, Board of Education, Illinois Department of Public Health, and the CDC have all acknowledged that all, that, excuse me, that districts have the local authority to end mask mandates. Many districts have already announced they're ending their mandates, including Oswego County School, District 308, Central District Number Three, Richard Burton District 157, and Nipper Singh School District Number Two. In conclusion, I would like to ask you all to please give our children their freedom back. The state is open, the risk is negligible. Our kids deserve to get back to school with some normalcy. Thank you for your time.
After Becky Riley is Martha Casey. After Becky Riley.
Hello, everyone. Welcome, Dr. Hunt, new board members. Thanks for being here, listening to me tonight. I'm going to start off by telling you some stats and some stories. And also, I'm going to tell you that I am a parent of two middle school students here in Barrington at 220. First of all, suicide rates are up among teens and they're at an all-time high during the COVID isolation. During the distancing, the amplified challenges that children and teens have already experienced. Children, child psychologists warn us that prolonging the mask-wearing, social distancing, and discrimination will likely only drive those numbers up. We've already witnessed that the physical harm that the masks have employed upon our kids. One example is this, on May the 22nd, a North Barrington mother reported her six-year-old being admitted to the hospital for metabolic issues, low broad sugar, dehydration from wearing the mask too long outside in hot temperatures. A volunteer parent at the same school, the same day, reported watching a young boy aggressively vomiting. And those are whole words. He was outside in the middle of his field day. One child left countryside via ambulance while another was admitted to Lori Children's Hospital. One mom who picked her child up at noon on field day because he reported he was suffocating. Around the country, there are many cases just like these. And I think we've all heard about them. On average, masks are worn about 6.7 hours a day. Independent studies have shown that masks can grow dangerous pathogens and promote significant bacterial growth. significant bacterial growth. More recently, and perhaps most disturbing, is the JAMA article concluding that masks can retain a toxic level of exhaled CO2 in as little as three minutes. This can lead to brain fog, disorientation, confusion, headaches, and much more serious health problems. Totally by any standards, and especially mine, I am a retired respiratory care practitioner. These standards, by all means, are unacceptable for any child. Certainly not yours. Certainly not yours. Certainly not yours or mine. Did you know that children are 50 times more likely to die from the COVID vaccine than the virus?
Yeah.
That's true. The Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, or VAERS as we call it, has an alarming number of adverse effect reports following the vaccines, especially in children. To reiterate what someone else just said earlier, 438,440 adverse effects. Within those, 26,000 hospitalizations, 7,000 disabled, 3,000 heart attacks, 2,200 myocarditis reactions, 985 miscarriages. One more thing, half of those from myocarditis are children. That should be alarming.
Thank you, Becky.
Good evening. Welcome to the district. I'm Monica Casey. I'm a parent of three children in District 220 for the past 15 years. I'm reaching out to all of you once again. I was attending the last two board meetings on the same topic, and I am looking to ask for the requirement of masks and/or screenings to be fully resolved today.
Yes.
Once again, I urge you to place priority on lifting the mask mandate irrespective of vaccination status for all Barrington students. As of last week, the CDC and IDPH gave our recommendations to us and restored decision-making at the district level for Illinois schools. The District 220 Board can vote for this today and has the ability to do so, unmask our students, end the disruptive quarantine processes for healthy children, and decline the unnecessary testing being proposed by IDPH. As of today, 40 states already eliminated school mask mandates altogether, and several school districts in Illinois have as well. Parents are responsible for deciding their children's health and well-being, and masks should be optional based on the family's preference and should be respected by all staff and students as a united group with the male goal of promoting an outstanding education for our children, period. Listen to our community, please. Remove extreme administrative burdens to the D-220 staff and end explicit, implicit taxpayer costs of these measures. As members of this community, it's imperative to make this a priority. Masks dehumanize and desensitize our children. Requiring masks for students throughout the day is both physically and psychologically detrimental to their cognitive and social development. And over the past year, our medical providers indicated that health issues directly as a result of wearing masks are many. There are so many long-term negative effects of masking, and yet so avoidable. I implore you, as representatives of Barrington 220, to be leaders, advocate for what our community, our parents, the sole reason you are here in your respective positions today are actively asking you to do. I have faith that you will bring this forward with a sense of leadership, positivity, and hope for our entire school district, stand united with the primary goal of providing an outstanding education for our children and leading education altogether in Illinois. Thank you.
Alyssa Casey's coming up, and Allison Simon is on deck.
Hello, all. My name is Alyssa Casey, and I'm a sophomore at Barrington High School. I'm here to speak about this upcoming school year regarding masking and other COVID restrictions. We all know the state of Illinois has lifted social distancing and mask mandates with businesses and other areas and activities no longer requiring them. As a member of Barrington High School's dance team, we have recently been able to practice maskless indoors and outdoors without any issues or positive cases. Lake and Cook County are at a .5 on the CDC's Social Vulnerability Index. I would like to reiterate the fact that the COVID vaccine is not FDA-approved yet, and with new concerns being cited, as many doctors and pediatricians not recommending use for As COVID cases continue to decline, it is no longer a pandemic or a national health crisis, and we need to return our focus on learning and educating students in school versus promoting fear, bullying, and segregation. We need to respect individual healthcare needs and choices and not force medical decisions with ramifications and stigma. Moving into next year, I know majority of my peers feel masking, social distancing, and other COVID restrictions should no longer be required, and vaccination distinction should not be allowed. Instead, masking should be a personal decision for each family with their physician. As a community, there is no serious risk of contracting COVID, and the probability of spreading or contracting the virus, especially in youth, is virtually 0%. We have gone through so much this past year as a nation, as a state, and as a community. COVID and masking has taken a massive toll on each of us. Think about this: Some toddlers and young children have never even played with one another maskless, have never gone to a store or school without seeing masks on each and every person they encounter. They've missed one of the most important stages of social development, and K through 12 have suffered greatly. We haven't been able to socialize, see real emotions or expressions, participate in group activities or projects, or even give each other high fives or hugs in over a year and a half. This is specifically the reason we have increased rates of anxiety, depression, and suicides while being desensitized and dehumanized. And it's extremely sad and unnerving. It's time to say goodbye to these requirements. We've all had enough of this. Over 40 states across the country have eliminated mask mandates in school regardless of vaccination status. Wrigley Field and movie theaters are packed with adults, seniors, and children. So regardless of masks or vaccinations, so why can't our schools, I mean, look around this room?
My name is Anastasia. I have two young children at Grove Avenue School. I am a proud first-generation American whose family lived through communist history, not this altered history being taught today. Weaponizing public education for political gain is shameful. Call it by any three letters or words you choose, but we know exactly what the purpose is. These sex and race theories have been debunked internationally. Barrington is expected to be at the forefront of moral, factual education, yet it's continually being pushed to advanced political agendas from Springfield, Illinois. We know the staff is being trained to view children through the lens of race rather than their uniqueness as a human being. Parents are on alert. Our children are on alert, and we have taught them to be on alert now because of this. Any unacceptable assignments, teacher behavior, surveys, or bullying is going to be challenged and circulated amongst parents. We have a running list already of staff members promoting anti-Americanism and anti-white race culture. Manufacturing hate-based school culture by demonizing white people is racist. If any staff member fits this description, they will be called out. A child should never know what side of the political aisle a school staff member is on. This is not their job, and it's certainly not your job. They are our children. We are the majority, and we won't sit idly by and allow our children's innocence to be stolen and weaponized. We, the parents, request an immediate platform with a Q and A on who decided that Be the Change Barrington, a social justice movement, should be partnered with our schools to push radical activism, false facts, and an accusatory curriculum against white children and white Why did the school district spend resources and taxpayer money adding a diversity position and anti-white curriculum during the 2020 school shutdown? Your priority was to get these kids in school in person, not to work on radical social We, the parents, request all plans and communications between your diversity director, the district's staff, Be the Change, BEA Teachers Union, and Barrington Area Library, because we know there is a direct correlation between them.
Thank you, Anastasia.
Manufacturing an oppressed group and an oppressor group, then pitting children against each other, is wrong. Why are you grooming our children to hate America and each other? Regardless of race, religion, gender, and status, we are all Americans. You will hear us out. Civil rights activists championed this, and they succeeded. We have constitutional rights. We choose liberty, and we're pushing back. You are on notice. Leave our children out of the political game.
Jim Simon is up, and followed by Margot Dalstream. Allison did not get the chance to... That was Anastasia. What was your last name, Anastasia? From Grove? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Anastasia. Okay, so Allison Simon, and then Jim Simon.
So my name is Allison. I have almost four kids, two of whom are at Countryside, and I'm here to also advocate for making masks optional come fall. I won't reiterate what everybody else has already said, but from my opinion, I don't believe there's any data that the masks are actually working, but there is data that the masks harm the children. The CO2, there was a study done. Parents took, I believe, seven masks to a lab to have them inspected, and all the disgusting things that were on the mask make me afraid to put my child in one. I also think the community respects people who choose to wear the masks for their own reasons. We're asking for the same thing. Let the parents choose if we want to mask our kid or not, for whatever reasons that may be. K through 12, more importantly, the smaller kids, the data from last year, seeing pictures, seeing them when they were in school, they were wearing them below their noses, they were touching them, they were sucking on them. That's not wearing a mask properly. So to me, the masks were irrelevant last year, and there was no outbreaks. There was no shutdown of schools. I would like to say that before the pandemic had started going, my children, when we didn't know any information, obviously, everybody was nervous. When I asked my child, are you given the opportunity before lunch to wash your hands? He said no. Before snack? No. Can we bring back good hygiene measures? Hand washing. CDC says that's the number-one thing, wash your hands. He wasn't even been given that opportunity to wash your hands. I don't even think they were doing it now. You just slap some hand sanitizer on, but they say it has to take four minutes to take effect. So I have some data here also from the CDC that says the most recent seasonal flu and H1N1 were more deadly for children than COVID. In the United States, deaths for children 17 and under for COVID was 324. The 2018-2019 flu season was 477. Our last pandemic, the H1N1, between 890 to over 1,000 children were killed by that. But yet, none of these mitigations were in effect then. I have also some suburban Cook County data shows that hospitalization rates increased drastically with age. Under 20 is a 1.28%. Over 80 is 35.2% hospitalization by age. And then my last is the Illinois data shows that mortality rate also increases dramatically with age. Our children under 20 is at a .008%.
Thank you, Allison.
Good evening. My name is James Simon. I'm the father of three, soon to be four, students in the Barrington 220 School District. I'd like to address two topics. First, I'd like to add my voice to those of the other parents and students that are imploring this board to stop the literal muzzling of our children in their academic The time for masks and social distancing has passed. It is time to reinsert personal choice and parents' ability to make individual risk-benefit calculations for their own family back into our school system. Our children have been pawns in a political battle that has politicized medicine of all things, in spite of the complete lack of evidence of any significant risk to our children, or even that they are vectors to spread this disease, among others. The time is now for courage from our school board, from our teachers, and from our administrators to end the mask theater and use the CDC guidelines for what they are. Recommended guidance, not one-size-fits-all mandates. The second topic I'd like to address with the board, if I may, is what this district is doing, or rather, the lack of what this district is doing for the most academically talented among our student population. I've recently learned that Huff Street will not be offering their gifted program, the so-called Extended Self-contained Program, for our third graders this year. After talking to program administrators, it appears that none of our second-grade population met all four of the thresholds for the typical criteria, the four metrics that they use for selection into this program. Interestingly, it would appear that the verbal scores were the most problematic. Not coincidentally, our second-grade cohort had the latter half of their first-grade academic career impacted by remote learning, and almost the entirety of their second-grade career. If the top 1% of our students haven't been immune to the impacts of your drastic overkill measures to fight this disease, I can only fear for what the rest of the 99% of the class has been impacted. After talking to the administration of Countryside Elementary about what options remain for my second-grade student who scored in the 99th percentile of his age cohort, the only option available to him is one-year acceleration in math. That is a wholly insufficient gifted program for a district with the quality and reputation of Barrington 220. Our top performers are still top performers. The top 1%, top 5% of the class are still top 5%, and we need to do more to maximize their potential. I implore the board and Superintendent Dr. Hunt, I understand you have a history of improving gifted curriculums in your past. I implore you to do more for our students to maximize their potential. Our students on this issue and any number of them deserve better. I challenge you to do better.
Okay, great, thank you. And then Aaron Sheffman, and then we'll probably be pausing for our hearing at 8 o'clock. And then Erin Sheffman, and then we'll probably be pausing for our hearing at 8 o'clock.
Hello. My name is Margot Dahlstream. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak, and I want to address what many other parents have addressed, but more with focus on vaccines. But first, what we know about the COVID illness, one of the first things we learned based on the preliminary mortality data from China is that this virus is representing a vanishingly tiny threat of death, hospitalization, or severe disease to children. Now, we know that for the vast majority of the population, recovery from this illness is at 99.5% or better without any treatment, and cases now are at pre-pandemic levels in this state. Regarding the vaccines, we're learning some short-term side effects that include the myocarditis, pericarditis, neurological disorders, and fertility concerns. Since there are no long-term studies on the COVID vaccine, what is it that we don't know about additional side effects? I am all for getting my children vaccinated for illnesses that pose a serious threat to their well-being where those vaccines have full FDA approval. I'm all for allowing those who worry about their own risks related to this virus for getting the vaccine that's been available under the emergency use authorization. But I am not in favor of coercing anyone through social media pressure, bribes or incentives, or the threat of educational medical discrimination to getting an experimental vaccine. For a school board to vote on policies and procedures that would feed into that coercion is reckless. I'm also very concerned about creating a culture where private health information ceases to be private anymore. When I think back on our lower elementary school days and the secrecy that shrouded any head lice outbreak, the public... The public knowledge aspect of this virus and vaccine is at best inconsistent and absurd. The risk of feeding into this culture in the school district with differentiated masking policies based on vaccination status, extensive testing programs proposed by IDPH, contact tracing, and disruptive quarantine processes include compound learning losses from last year and perpetuating anxiety, depression, and other mental health concerns that have skyrocketed since this pandemic began. Thank you all for listening to me. Welcome, Dr. Hunt. It's very nice to meet you. My name is Erin Sheffman. I'm a mother of three children currently in the district. I am so moved by our wonderful speakers tonight. You guys did amazing. I'm just emotional just hearing all of your brave comments. I would like to add another perspective on the mask issue. Here's a visual aid so we can see how we compare to the rest of the country. In the states that are, in the states in dark green, they have banned the mask mandate. There are no masks required for children. In the states in light green, you can see, they have no mask mandates, and they have local flexibility. Here in Illinois, in light blue, it's very lonely, and the little pocket there, it is showing the masks are vaccine contingent. And the states in the dark blue are the very last ones that still have forced mask requirements. I feel that this dramatically shows a lot about Illinois, and it speaks volumes. As we know, people are leaving Illinois in droves to go... To go to these other green states. From the latest numbers that I found, 80,000 people have left Illinois this year so far. Let's not give them another reason to leave. I assure you that your decision tonight about masks, and you said that you will be making your positions known tonight, will impact parents' school decisions for this fall. Our children's health and right to breathe is riding on your vote. Your decision will make parents decide whether they keep their children in 220 School District or find alternative educational options, if they even choose to stay in Illinois at all. After our amazing summers we've been having, we don't want to go backwards. We don't want any of our children masked, especially our young elementary students who are voiceless in this fight. We don't want them masked or socially distanced. It's unnatural, and it's harmful to their development. The safety of our children and your future tax dollars hang in the balance. As a mother and someone who wants to be proud of our town, I'm praying that you have the courage and the strength to fight for our children and make masks optional. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, it is 7:59. If we just wait 15 seconds, it'll switch to 8 o'clock, I think, and then we can start our hearing.
I'm going to invite Dr. Dave Bynne to come out up. We do have to have a hearing, which is a requirement of the utilization of our ESAR funds. I believe this can move fairly quickly. Dave will give a little bit of background on the reason for this, give it a high level how we're using the ESAR dollars in terms of our recovery and response to COVID-19, and then we can resume public comment. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Dave.
We actually need to publicly have a motion open.
We need to have a motion, open the hearing?
It's a motion open or at least a vote, roll call vote for the hearing.
We have a motion?
Second.
Okay, and then a roll call, please, to open the hearing?
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Motion passes.
Thank you, board members. I've got a short presentation for you today, and as part of the overall public hearing that you have, received input on the American Rescue Plan, elementary and secondary school emergency relief program. So this is the ARP ESAR program. So you might be familiar with the CARES Act. That was really the first ESAR program, and then there was a second ESAR program, and then there was a third, which we refer to as the ARP ESAR. And this was authorized under some legislation that was passed by the federal government. And through that, the federal government has provided funds to school districts to reopen and sustain safe operation of schools and try to address the impact that the coronavirus pandemic has had on public education across the country. And Barrington has been allocated approximately $6 million in funds through the ARP ESAR program, and these can be used for expenses that we incurred back from March 13, 2020, through September 30, 2023. So it covers a little longer period than the previous two ESAR programs. There's a stipulation in this legislation that says not less than 20% of the funds have to be used to address learning loss through implementation of evidence-based programs or interventions, and that those interventions need to respond to students' social, emotional, and academic needs. So that's a portion of the program. And in addition, that grant recipients, which would include our school district, have to seek public comment on the plan for a Safe Return to School program of instruction, for in-person instruction. And then, once we've gotten that, and we have that plan in place, then we have to post that on our website. So I'm here to talk a little bit about that. I've got a very short return-to-school plan. As you know, board, we intend to return to school full-time with in-person instruction for the 21-22 school year. Additionally, as we've shared with you before, we do intend to provide some additional staffing materials and SEL supports for our students as they return to school after not being in school as much over the last year and a half. So just as a recap and reminder for you as to how we had talked about spending our SR3 funds, so we're going to have to have about, you have to have no less than 20% spent to support students, but we have SEL about 1.2 million, Student Learning 1.3 million, additional half a million in curricular expenses, and 200,000 in summer school. This is well over the 20% threshold that we need to have in support of our students as they return. Additionally, as we had talked about at a previous board meeting, we are earmarking about 2.8 million, which is for a combination, primarily air quality, to improve air quality within our buildings, which was called out in the SR3 regulations as an important focus that school districts should consider, as well as some additional costs associated with cleaning as we roll into this next year. So that was just a recap on the program that we have. That was all I had for you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from you at this time. Otherwise, I'm going to go ahead and head back to my seat in case there's any other public comment for you.
I think it's important to note, this is reopening in terms of bringing students back.
That's correct.
This isn't about masking, or this is about how we're using those funds as it relates to supporting students upon the return from COVID.
Exactly right. Thank you, Dr. Hunt.
So is there anybody with any questions?
The 2.8 million that we want to allocate toward air quality, do we know right now what specific types of systems we're looking at? Are they HEPA filters? Are they COVID-specific?
We're looking at bipolar ionization systems primarily, and also some improved controls with some of our fans and controllers for our HVAC system. Make sure that we've got the best mix possible, maximum amount of fresh air coming into our buildings, we're able to control that effectively.
It's primarily for adequate ventilation?
That's right. It's improving air quality and ensuring that we've got appropriate ventilation.
But it's not like a hospital-grade filtration system or anything like that?
No.
Any concerns with any hiring that's going on to fill these funds?
Well, you know, I would defer over to some of my colleagues on that, but can tell you that with this legislation, districts across the country, we're looking to find additional staff members to provide SEL support for students, as well as some other services. So there has been quite a bit of demand in that area, but I would defer to Dr. Hunt or some of my colleagues.
Maybe you could give us an update here, next report.
Yeah, we can do that. I know Teresa's been working diligently to fill these positions, and we're in good shape, and we'll certainly provide you an update when, maybe at our next meeting.
Any other comments or questions? We did not do a separate public comment. I just looked through here, I didn't see anybody that was wanting to talk on ESAR funds.
Thank you, board members.
Anyone need to address the board on ESAR funds? Okay, hearing done. We'll call the public comment of the hearing closed. I think we need to have a roll call vote to close the hearing? Do we have a motion to close the hearing? Katie?
Second.
Erin? And a roll call, please.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
So the hearing is closed. All right, we will continue with our public comment. First up is Jessica Hutchinson, and then followed by Krista...oh my gosh. Bowenfront, thank you. Welcome, Jessica.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jessica Hutchinson. I'm the mother of two children, one who will be entering second grade at Roslin, another who we will keep in private preschool for another year. I'm also a mental health professional specializing in sudden traumatic and violent loss. Today, I sit before you all, once again, urging you to give our children a sense of normalcy. Warranted or not, the decisions that have been made over the last 18 months have tragically impacted the mental health of our youth. It saddens me that a lot of this fallout could have been prevented. The following numbers were pulled directly from the IDPH website and can be found under death statistics, for those who would like to fact-check. In 2020, 552 children ages 1 to 17 died. That's a 10% increase from the number of deaths in 2019. The increase was found in the top three leading causes of death: accidents, which includes drug overdose, homicide, and suicide. Even more staggering was young adults ages 18 to 24, which had a 34% increase from the year 2019. Once again, you will find those statistics under drug overdose, accidents, homicide, and suicide. There was a 25% increase in those same areas for 25 to 44. In 2020, there was a 64...67, excuse me, 67% increase in overdose deaths alone for ages 25 and under. In every single age group, there was a substantial increase in overdose deaths. In Lake County alone, there was a 27.8% increase. There's one common theme in every single number that I have just now listed. The isolation experienced over the past year resulted in more young deaths than the year before, all of which are directly linked to their mental health. We need to get back to normal. When we are out of a routine or in an unfamiliar place, it deteriorates our mental health conditions. Wearing a mask in school is not normal. The issue is not the physical wearing of a mask. It's a constant reminder that accompanies the mask. The mask represents uncertainty and fear that has killed our children. If you want to provide a positive impact, let our kids get back to normal. Lastly, I urge all parents right now listening to talk to their children about their use of masks. We started doing this in my mental health practice. I have heard time and time again, my kids don't even mind the mask. However, when I encourage them to ask their children why, why they don't mind, their answers have floored them. A seven-year-old boy told his mom, "Because without it, I will die." A 13-year-old girl told her mother, "Because I can hide from the world." When I lost my father to suicide in 2011, I learned two huge life lessons. One is we can do everything exactly as we should and still not prevent death. Two is life will never be risk-free. Everything comes with some level of risk. We have asked our country to follow the science, and we must continue to do so. The social-emotional struggles far outweigh the risk of transmission and the risk of severe disease or hospitalization for our kids. It's time to bless our children first.
Krista, followed by Josh Little.
Good evening. My name is Krista Bowenfront. I've been a resident of Barrington since the third grade, went to Grove Avenue School, and I have two children, a almost junior and a son going into eighth grade. I am reading this compelling letter on behalf of Alyssa Padzen. My son, who will be a senior, has a medical exemption from vaccines since he was a baby. He almost died twice from vaccinations, and it was unanimously advised from Children's Hospital, Northwestern, and the Mayo Clinic to never vaccinate him again. His younger sisters are fully vaccinated, so she's not an anti-vaxer. His exemption has never been an issue with District 220 for 12 years. Per his doctor's recommendations, he will not be getting the COVID shot. I know you will hear from others with data on the dangers of wearing masks for the entire school population, but I'd like to address a scenario that may be under consideration to only mask those children who do not get the vaccine. Hopefully, the board will vote not to mask any children, but if the compromise is only to mask kids who don't get the shot, I'd like to offer an argument against that. Please consider that this coercive strategy... Please consider that this coercive strategy threatens the children with segregation, marginalization, and old-fashioned bullying. This mask issue is no longer about the science, but it's about winning adult agendas and our kids are being sacrificed as the pawns. I listened to my friend who's on a school board for a different district. I was in shock when he profoundly said, "We will probably just be taking things away from them until they take it." Bottom line, my son turns 18 in September. If he were to submit to your tactics to get vaccinated, I'm terrified that this will put his life in jeopardy and once again, and this will be a direct result of the board's vote. As of June 4th, there have been over 5,000 deaths in the CDC's VAERS database from the COVID vaccine. There has been a total of 238 deaths in kids under 17 from COVID. That's a 0.04%. My son's chances of dying from the vaccine astronomically exceed that of COVID. I asked the board to allow our kids to be used as pawns for political signaling. If the vaccine works, then those that have taken it shouldn't be worried. I respect their right to take an unapproved vaccine with no long-term studies, so they should respect my right as well.
Thank you, Josh. Robert Wyden, you're up next.
Hello, my name is Josh Little and I'm the father of three kids in the school district. First, I'd like to welcome Dr. Hunt to our community and let you know we look forward to watching you lead this group of outstanding teachers and administrators. I also would like to say, if you play your cards right, you just may end up representing this community for a long time. And if that interests you, I just ask that you look around the room today, listen to the public comments, and then think about what this community stands for. Just a little exercise. If anybody in this room has ties to the community of, I don't know, 60 more years, stand up. 60. Anyone with 60? About 50 years. Anybody that ties to the community? Keep standing, keep standing. 40 years. How about 30 years? 20 years, stand up. 10 years, stand up. And if you moved here because of the Barrington community that these people helped establish years ago, stand up. Dr. Hunt, this is Barrington. This is what this community stands for. I echo the sentiments spoken earlier regarding masking and quarantining, and I won't say a lot of the same points raised earlier, but I wanted to end with this. One of the last things Brian Harris said was, "It's easy to lead in good times and be a good leader." It's easy to lead in good times, and to be a good leader, you have to lead in tough times too. I ask that the board leads us out of this pandemic, make things normal for our kids, consistent with everything that is happening around Barrington. Field of Dreams, no masks. B.C. Park, no masks. Shakuh, Moretti's, McGonigals, no masks. Barrington Pool, no masks. Jewel, no masks. We could go on and on. If things go bad, we can always go backwards, but why start the year in fear when our community has already moved past it?
Thank you, Josh. After Robert Wyden will be Jim McGrath.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, most of you here do. My name is Robert Wyden. I have two children here in Barrington, 220 schools. I don't need to spend a lot of time reiterating what you've heard tonight, you know, most of which I agree with, not all of which, but that's the nature of it, is we're all going to have slightly different takes. What I'm here to kind of implore this board and remind you guys is that out of all the guidance that has come out from the CDC and the state of Illinois in the recent days is they are passing on local control. They do realize that the CDC has to look at the entire country and they're not looking at what is going on in Barrington, and they can't and they shouldn't. But this board can and this board should. And remind you guys that you were elected from the Barrington 220 community and just ask that you make your own decision and not reiterate what somebody else has told you to think or what somebody else has said. Look at the evidence, look at this community, and then, you know, make the best informed decision that you guys can. And we all are trusting you guys to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. After Jim will be Courtney Holesworth.
My name is Jim McGrath. I have spoken to the board several times over the last couple of years. Some of you guys know me. Every time I've spoken, it's been for the safety and well-being of the students. I have two grandkids in D-220. One is vaccinated, one is not old enough to be vaccinated. So, I've always talked about support and safety of the kids, and that's been for guns. We now have a, something that we have to worry about that we can't see, and that's COVID. What's coming out now is the Delta variant. It's new. It attacks kids. There are 20 kids in, or 12 kids in Mississippi, 10 of which are on life support right now because of this. Let's not bring that to Barrington. Okay, let's keep, follow the CDC guidelines. I have experience with masks. I know they work. In November, I was working with my son to move some furniture. We were in the cab of a truck for a half an hour. We worked together for an hour and a half. We both wore masks. The day after that, he tested positive for COVID. So did his wife and kids. I did not get the COVID. Okay?
Let's listen to Jim, please.
I'm sorry?
I wanted to make sure they're quiet because we can't hear you.
Thank you. So, I know masks work. Okay, I have, not anecdotal, I have direct experience, so masks work. And all I'm asking is that the board follow the CDC guidelines. Students benefit from in-person learning. We all know that. And everybody wants to get back to normal, but you have to go through some hard times before you get back to normal.
Okay. Everybody was respectful and he listened to you. Please, let's hear Jim out.
So, if people don't want to get vaccinations, there's an option. You can wear a mask.
Where's your mask?
Or you can wear a mask or you can do remote learning. Okay. So, all I'm asking, all I'm asking is that the board follow the CDC guidelines. And I'd just like to make a comment to all the people that are against masks. Next time you have an operation, why don't you tell the people in that operating room, masks are optional.
All right, all right. Okay, Courtney is up next. Thank you, Jim. Courtney is up next. Courtney? After Courtney will be Brian Kroll. Please, please.
Hi.
I can't hear her. Can you hear her, please?
My name is Courtney Holesworth. I grew up in Barrington, attending North Barrington Elementary, Prairie Middle School, and VHS. I have an incoming freshman and I moved my fourth grader from North Barrington to Quest Academy. In regards to masks, why are we still talking about this? We do realize, we do realize that our kids have been together all summer, jumping and huddles together on baseball fields, celebrating wins, sitting next to each other at open movie theaters, dancing at the eighth grade dance, swimming, birthday parties, barbecues. So, now we're going to bring them back for school, space them out, and put masks back on them?
No.
Frankly, this conversation is tired, and I can't believe I had to take time away from my 18-month-old to stand up for my 14-year-old tonight. Sadly, there is no point in getting into the data and science because it doesn't even seem to matter anymore. When will the 220 school board I grew up with and know and love make what we all know is the right decision? Let the parent choose whether or not to mask their own kid. The job here, your job is to educate our children, not worry about my parents. They're fine. And not to insert control by mandating my child wears a piece of cloth over his face that we can now buy on clearance at Target for 99 cents.
Brian Kroll? And then next up is Dean Rehass.
You can skip Brian.
Okay. Dean?
I think we had it in the morning.
Dean left as well? Okay. Shiba Sands?
Shiba.
After Shiba would be Heather Ewald.
Hello, I'm Shiba Sands and I have to admit, I was a little bummed out about the hearing. I thought it was going to be really boring, but one nugget I took away is that we're spending $2.8 million on air purification, so I think that means we don't need masks. In his introductory hello video online, Dr. Hunt indicated that the core of his job has always been about improving the learning experience for our students, and I could not agree more. Let's start by letting them get some fresh air to their brains while they're trying to learn. Let's also recognize students' medical freedom and the inviolable rights of parents to make medical decisions in the best interest of their children. We don't need the school board or any other entity to try to usurp our role, and our kids should be free to learn without distractions of unnecessary quarantines, invasive testing, or vaccine discrimination. And rather than worrying about legal liability and COVID insurance and pushback from the IDPH or ISB, maybe District 220 should be concerned about liability related to coercive medical experiments on its students. The data illustrates that masks are not safe, and at the very least, mask use and other medical decisions should be optional at the discretion of parents. Face masks are bacteria-laden Petri dishes resting at the doorstep of our respiratory membranes. As already mentioned, 11 different pathogens, including pneumonia, sepsis, and TB, were found on students' masks after just one day at school. No wonder they're known as face diapers. In addition, on June 30th of this year, the Journal of the American Medical Association Pediatrics published a horrific study with randomized control trial. Not surprisingly, 100% of the children reached four times the OSHA permissible limits of CO2 exposure in just nine minutes. If that were happening with employees in your school district and they filed a complaint, that would be a big HR issue. Imagine what this level amounts to after an entire school day. As such, the study's authors stated, quote, "We suggest that decision-makers weigh the hard evidence produced by these experimental measures accordingly, which suggest that children should not be forced to wear masks," end quote. These COVID protocols could leave our children less healthy than at the start of the pandemic. They're unnecessary, they're beyond risky, and we as parents are our children's chief caretakers. We don't need your help. We need you to teach them. History has shown us that public health disguises rarely return true informed consent or freedom to the people. So, as we stand on the border of medical coercion outlawed by the Nuremberg Code, we pray you have the courage to stand with us and support medical freedom for our children. Make masks optional without any discrimination based on vaccination status or testing.
Heather, and then next up, after Heather is Amy Season.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight to all of you who are representing my family on our school board, and thank you for your time and dedication to our D-220 children. I would like to especially welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Hunt, to our district and to Illinois. I am Heather Ewald. I'm a parent of D-220 children, and I would like to share my perspective on mask-wearing when returning to fall school. Some of my children are able to wear them just fine, but some of my children get headaches and can't breathe with them on. This is my experience. Some of my children get anxiety with the mask-wearing. Some of them have anxiety seeing people wear them. I'm greatly concerned with my children in Chinese immersion who are struggling to learn the language because they cannot see the lips move of their peers and teachers. A lot of language is learned with your lips. I just need you to know that some children do suffer when forced to wear masks. My children do. There are negative consequences to mask-wearing. I am also concerned with the divisiveness that this topic is causing in our district, a topic I feel there should be no problems with. Wear a mask or don't, it's your choice. There are people demanding that, people demanding that vaccinated children be marked somehow at school or forced to wear masks at all times regardless of if there is an outbreak or not. There are children not able to be vaccinated of no fault of their own. Some parents have decided the risk of the adverse reactions to the vaccine outweigh the risk of their children dying of or being adverse reaction to COVID. We need to be equitable to all the children in our district and stop the negative rhetoric. We need to come together in love and solidarity. We do not need to be shaming children who choose not to wear masks or do wear masks. I know that you have stated that our districts will be following the CDC guidelines, but their guidelines leave wiggle room for each district to determine their own preventative strategies and masking guidelines, especially when community transmission is under 10 cases per 10,000, as we are now in Lake and Cook Counties according to IDPH today. The CDC states that, quote, "In general, people do not need to wear masks outdoors." So, I urge you at least to make sure that our children do not have to wear masks outside at recess in the heat and humidity of Illinois. And just, I'd like you to be brave and make the choice to make masks optional. Thank you and God bless.
Amy?
No, she had to leave.
She had to leave? Okay. Cindy Hasselblatt?
Had to leave.
Okay. Ann Bucy?
Left.
Mary Kellambach?
Left.
Mercedes Beltran? I think she left as well. Allison Rorbeck?
Left.
Dr. Betts? After Dr. Betts is the Tomasians. I see both Doug and Agnes.
Hi, good evening. I'm Bill Betts. I have three children in the school district and they're centered in the Barbara Rose Elementary School area. And I think it's common sense that everyone here knows that the kids are not wearing their masks anywhere other than potentially at school, right? So, it seems a little bit silly to have them wear it at school. So, I mean, that being said, a lot of people have mentioned that. Now, I know, let's take a step beyond common sense and let's talk about politics and the law, because I've heard the board reference a number of times the IDPH recommendations. I like to just read some important excerpts from there. It starts off with considerations for reopening schools. It's considerations, this is not a law. It then goes on to recommend the following, and I'll read the important part that pertains to this. Maintaining a distance of at least six feet from other adults, this is at the time this was written, and from other students when feasible. When feasible, obviously, you can decide it's just not feasible to teach in a school and have everyone packed and clothed and get what you want done, right? So, this is not a mandate. This is a suggestion. And lest you think that the Illinois lawmakers are not capable of making laws and telling you what they really mean, they do. They say "shall." They don't recommend things. They tell you what shall be done. And if, the word "shall" describes mandates. You see "shall" zero times in the entire IDPH guidelines. It doesn't say "shall" a single time. You can do an easy word search for that. If you look at something regarding mandatory attendance for schoolchildren, it uses the word "shall" 70.
Hi, good evening. I'm Bill Betts. I have three children in the school district and they're centered in the Barbara Rose Elementary School area. And I think it's common sense that everyone here knows that the kids are not wearing their masks anywhere other than potentially at school, right? So it seems a little bit silly to have them wear it at school. So that being said, a lot of people have mentioned that. Now I know, let's take a step beyond common sense and let's talk about politics and the law, because I've heard the board reference a number of times the IDPH recommendations. I like to just read some important excerpts from there. It starts off with considerations for reopening schools. It's considerations, this is not a law. It then goes on to recommend the following, and I'll read the important part that pertains to this. Maintaining a distance of at least six feet from other adults, this is at the time this was written, and from other students when feasible. When feasible, obviously you can decide it's just not feasible to teach in a school and have everyone packed and closed and get what you want done, right? So this is not a mandate, this is a suggestion. And lest you think that the Illinois lawmakers are not capable of making laws and telling you what they really mean, they do. They say "shall." They don't recommend things, they tell you what shall be done. And if... The word "shall" describes mandates. You see "shall" zero times in the entire IDPH guidelines. It doesn't say "shall" a single time, you can do an easy word search for that. If you look at something regarding mandatory attendance for schoolchildren, it uses the word "shall" 72 times. And then it goes on to describe what happens if you don't do it, right? You're guilty of a Class C misdemeanor, yada, yada, you're going to pay money, you're going to do jail time. So keep in mind that when these guys make these recommendations, they're just recommendations. You guys are the ones who set the rules. And they let you know that too in the actual recommendations. So I urge you guys to use the authority that we've given you to make that call on our behalf. Like, don't defer to the IDPH. Thank you.
All right, Doug Tomasian? Agnes Tomasian? John Cushing? Lenny Keller? Mark Dominico? Joe Holland? Hello, Joe.
Hello, hello, hello. My name is Joe Holland, I've been a resident for over 20 years. Daughter graduated from high school, two going... One in high school, one going into high school. My wife graduated from Barrington High School and her mother graduated from Barrington High School. Hey, listen, it's been a tough, you know, last 18 months. I think we all recognize that, and I think we all made some sacrifices. People can argue whether they're good, bad, or indifferent. But the newsflash right now is, in Barrington, I can't speak for the rest of the world, the pandemic is over, right? COVID will be with us forever, but the pandemic is over in Barrington. I don't say... It's awesome to see everyone without masks on. I also understand why people have masks on, everyone has free choice, but at the end of the day, you know, our kids deserve to get back to normal. If they want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If they don't, don't. If they're vaccinated, that's great. If they're not, that's their choice. I think everyone has had a chance to take care of themselves, so I think it's time for us to take care of our kids. And I also, one recommendation, if you guys vote no for masks right now, you can clear out the room.
Rick LaBoye? Is Rick here? Oh, I see him. And then Helen, you're next, you're after Rick. You're after Rick.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all for being here, thank you for representing us. Thank everybody for coming out, I thank everybody that's vote. You guys stole everything that I gave you. I'm kind of stuck with just a little story. I'm one of the few that moved to Barrington because of the district. We moved here two years ago, my daughter has special needs. Her brain is developing, she needs oxygen, she should not have a mask on. There's so many things I want to say. This gentleman has every right to believe what he wants to believe. We shouldn't censor people or yell at them. The mask worked for him, he stated it. He can wear it, his grandkids can wear it. But our kids, we don't want it, and the majority speaks, and we're speaking loud, and we're telling everybody, for our kids, no masks. If his grandkids want to wear masks, if you want to wear a mask, if it worked for you, great, God bless you. But not for our kids. To piggyback off of another point, the statistic is, the exodus from Illinois, per capita, we are the highest of all 50 states. Only two states lead us, and that's New York and California, and that's by volume. Per capita, people are leaving Illinois. So they're sick of all the rules and regulations and the push down on us. So we're imploring you to act on our behalf. We're speaking to you and we're hoping that you'll listen and stick with us, and that's really all I have to say.
While Helen's coming up, Dan Norango is next, after Helen.
Hello, Board. Welcome, Dr. Hunt. I'm Helen Lodowski, I have four kids, two in the district. I'm a full-time advocate for all things 220, many of you already know me, not just this subject. I worked as a critical care nurse for a very long time. Chances are, if you were in this room or are in this room, I have advocated for your child at some point. My youngest is eight, so I'm excited about Normal. He did miss a year of schooling, and I think the top priority was to get him back. So I'm thankful that we're back. Almost three-fourths of my kids are fully vaccinated, but I have zero judgment for those who are not. And many of these people in the room know me and know that's true. I care for all students and have helped make the food better at the high school, the environment better, worked on the referendum court campaign committee and helped with special needs initiatives. I'm here 360 for 220, and I care about every single child. I was raised to believe since I was 22, you know, and started in the healthcare field a long time ago, that, you know, infectious disease protocol was the law, just like we understand that wearing a seatbelt and traffic lights are the law. If someone came up to you and said, "I refuse to just..." I think it's government overreach to, you know, wear a seatbelt or go through a traffic light, I just wouldn't know what to say. And that's how I felt when people were talking to me about masks. I was like, kind of like, I don't get it. It's just where I came from in the world that I came from. The masks were necessary to protect my patients, myself, and the greater community. It's how many of... Not all of us, medical folks are raised. It's the law for us in the hospital. It's disheartening to see my worlds collide. The masks seem like common sense, but it seems to offend so many. I feel only people who should be giving you advice actually are infectious disease experts. A contagion of this magnitude is global, and therefore whatever happens in India today will affect us in the United States a few months later. It's not just about our region. When we go to a birthday party, movie, whatever with our kids, that's our choice, but school isn't a choice. And we have immunocompromised, cancer, parents, all these people who should go to school and feel like they're completely safe. People say that if you want to wear a mask, it should be a choice, and those who wear a mask can feel protected, but that's not how masks work. If I'm wearing a mask because I care about you and I'm protecting you, it's not because I am trying to protect myself, although wearing a mask does have some protective qualities. Let's say there is a no-mask-wearing classroom, and we talked about this today with my friend who disagrees with me, but we care about each other. That classroom is a family, all year, they are a family. Johnny goes to a huge party where almost no one is vaccinated, essentially the entire classroom has gone to that party, because Johnny has now gone back to his classroom and that's his family. Because of Johnny's exposure, he also has exposed the rest of the classroom, just like HIV, you know? No one should care what Johnny does, it's not our business. What Johnny does is not our business. And that puts the mask issue to rest, because I don't want to care about who vaccinated my kids classroom. I don't care what my kids are doing, what the other kids are doing, regardless who dies more of what. This variant's job is to live, and anytime the variant can change, it can be more deadly to our children. For kids in elementary, knowing many have been traumatized by school closures, we must understand that kids being in school should take top priority. Consistency of mask use, age eight to 12, hand washing, disinfectant, she remains consistent until it's safe to do otherwise, inside the classroom, not out.
Okay, Dan, is Dan here? After Dan is Margalzada McGonigal.
Good evening. Dr. Hunt, nice to meet you, nice to meet you, Board. This is my first time speaking at the Board. My name is Dan Norango, it's my first time speaking at the Board. And one comment I'm going to make, I did write all of you yesterday and only one of you responded, so thank you very much to the person who did. One thing that I'm most disturbed by is the lack of emotion and the lack of interest that you're showing this crowd. Now, one thing that I do want to clear up really quickly is that HIV is not transmitted in the air, okay? I think that, Dr. Hunt, this is your opportunity to make a change in Barrington. Do not do what your predecessor did, which is basically sit back, write out his last term, and retire, letting a board make decisions for our children without any consideration for those children. I'm in no way asking this Board to do away with masks, especially for students and parents who choose to wear them. I'm simply requesting that this Board respect the parents who on a daily basis make decisions in the best interest of their children. I'm the father of four children who have been in 220 schools, and I've tried hard to make the best decisions for them. I do not want to lose that choice because of arbitrary policies and decisions made by individuals who literally have no skin in the game. My children were completely overjoyed when they returned to in-person learning, but were definitely adversely affected by the arbitrary rules requiring masks. As a parent, I struggle to explain to them why they had to, why they had to, when every study shows that, one, they're not super-spreaders they were named or titled, and, two, children were the absolute least susceptible to have adverse effects from the virus. I'm tired of explaining stupid and arbitrary rules to my children, implemented and devised by adults who are not living their lives. It's very easy for us to wear masks when we choose to, as you choose to, as you choose. But to explain it to them when we know they're at zero risk is very difficult for a parent. As a new superintendent, and certainly the 220 Board member, you must be alarmed by the increased rates of depression, psych med prescriptions, and suicide rates among our youth. Children today already face so many pressures and stigma as is. What the IDPH guidelines provide is just another means by which a child can be labeled, vaccinated or unvaccinated, and all the assumptions that are taking place between and among those two groups. Let families make choices privately. Do not succumb to the few who somehow feel they're doing their part, or, you know, making the world a better place by following these guidelines. Relaxing rules for those who are vaccinated, at its core, will foster and support discrimination, ostracizing, and bullying. All factors which each one of you categorically should oppose. I'm out of time, but you guys do what you're entrusted to do, do what we voted you in for. Give her the mask mandate in Barrington.
Margalzada? And is Sarah Jean Ketti still here?
Hello. I am Margalzada McGonigal. Welcome, Dr. Hunt, to a district of 20. And I wasn't going to talk about masks, because I know a lot of people talk about masks already, but I do have a degree in the science, and I spent quite a time in laboratory, wearing masks, studying bacterial and viral transmissions between animals and humans. And I can promise you, neither of us ever wore cloth masks for our safety. So, there you go. I kind of debunked the cloth mask theory, how they wore it. We all have heard the quote, "Those who do not learn history are doomed to repeat it." How do you feel about learning history that it's not actually factual while promoting the businessness? This is the basis for a critical race theory, or CRT, however you want to call it, which is now being pushed on our children. Theory, by the definition, is a well-sustained explanation of an aspect of a natural world that can incorporate laws, hypothesis, and facts. Theories are typically used in science, and I don't rely on past history. Critical race theory attempts to push rewritten history along with the facts are being distorted to better serve the narrow-minded CRT agenda. Basically, the certain people are inherently privileged and all others are oppressed, and it's all based on a skin color. In Illinois, we have 1 million Polish immigrants. I am a first-generation Polish immigrant. How many immigrants from Europe do we have here right now? How many immigrants from Europe do we have here right now? Look at all the hands. How is this even remotely possible to assume in a blanket statement that they represent white privilege, are responsible for slavery, and should hate themselves? A blanket statement condemning white people is just as ignorant and twisted as those who condemn people of color, period. My son's ancestors, which is my grandparents, were slaves in German and Russian camp after World War I. How many children in America can claim the same? Should my son feel guilty not just for his skin color, but for his white ancestors? Well, this is one of the bases of the CRT theories. CRT teaches the business, as far as I know, we have one race, the human race. And our Constitution states, "All men are created equal." Why would anyone want to teach our kids otherwise? I want school when kids can be kids, where they can learn how to respect one another regardless of race, creed, skin color, religion, or sexual preference, without being told that they are privileged or inferior or oppressed. My son and others should be proud of who they are. They should learn how to be leaders and not followers, how to explain and develop their brains instead of being restricted due to feelings of fear and guilt. We don't need to guide kids to make decisions based on an ignorant and fully incorrect accusation that CRT promotes. As Martin Luther King Jr. said, "It took a day when people would be not judged by the color of their skin, but the content of their character." CRT teachings not only ignore this universal statement, but turn it around. Anyone teaching or in favor of critical race theory should really read off on a real history so they can better reevaluate themselves. They are the ones that should not be pointing fingers at others. Thank you.
Is Sarah Jean Ketti here? Is she done? Paul Rednicki? How about Adam Hefen?
Do y'all mind if I stand?
I don't mind.
I can talk loud. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, sirs and ma'ams. Now, I just addressed you as respectfully as I know how. When I grew up, it was common courtesy to say, "Yes, ma'am," to a woman, "Yes, sir," to a man, and generally respect my elders. Nowadays, our children are being taught very confusing and just plain incorrect lessons, and in the process have lost a great deal of respect for their fellow human beings. Let me straighten out a couple of things for you if you're confused still. I have it on great authority, I'm a Christian man, oh, I'm sorry, I have a father of five here in the district too, I live in Barrington Hills. I have it on great authority in the Bible that God, He made them male and female. If you're still confused, you can read it. It doesn't say anything about pansexual, non-binary, gender-flu... I don't know what the hell that even means. I'm not sure what it means, and I bet most of the people here don't either. Our children are being taught a bunch of nonsense about many different genders, which are mostly determined by how one feels at that particular moment. This is so confusing. How are they to be respectful when addressing another person? Excuse me, "they," or, "good morning, them," or, "pardon me, it." "I did not know who or how you identified today, please forgive me, I'll try harder next time to call you by your made-up identity no one else could possibly know by looking at you." This is so confusing, and it's tearing up the morals and values of the children of today. It's no wonder so many are on antidepressants and anti-anxiety medications. While I'm on the top of the sex, let me speak about the ridiculous sex education you're proposing to teach my child, or my children, five of them. First of all, I do not relinquish my parental responsibility to you as educators. To have free rein to teach my children whatever you decide is age-appropriate for them, let me remind you how this works. We're the parents and have the responsibility to protect our children and guide you, the educators, on what's age-appropriate for our children to learn, especially when it comes to sexuality and sex education. Some brainless stooges that call themselves Chicago Public School Board of Education and adopted the most ridiculous and offensive sex education standards I've ever heard. They want to teach sixth graders how to use a female condom to have safe anal sex between boys. Y'all didn't know that? It's right here, it's right here. It's all over. Yeah, y'all should check this out. There's like nice lesbian pictures, gay pictures, no heterosexuals. I'm weird, I still like my wife's vagina. Sorry, was that too much? Because that's what we're asking kids to do, right? Go up and say, "Hi, you can call me by this." That's sex, that has no place. They just need to say who they are and what they want to do. My kids want to play ball with their friends. They don't want to come out, "Oh, you're a girl, you're..." "Oh, who do you like to..." "Who should I call you today?" It's ridiculous. That's a bunch of crap.
Thank you, Adam. Adam, I don't know if you heard the bell, but the bell, can you wrap it up, please?
Infinito. You educators, stick to reading, writing, arithmetic. Leave the parenting to parents, parents go best.
Paul Rednicki? After Paul will be Christine Dittman.
Thank you, sorry, I was in the other...
That's okay.
All right. My name's Paul Rednicki. I have a student at Countryside and a student entering Barrington High School later this fall. Want to keep correct a couple things I've heard over the course of the evening. First off, the phrase "all men are created equal" is primarily in the Declaration of Independence or the 14th Amendment to the Constitution, not the Constitution itself. Second of all, this board's primary responsibility is to keep our children safe, whether it's safe on the playground, or safe in the bus.
Please.
You cannot learn effectively if you're not in a safe environment. It's the responsibility of this board to keep the students, parents, and teachers and staff in these buildings and even in their homes outside these buildings as safe as they possibly can. I have an immunocompromised individual in my house. Earlier this summer, my wife had a kidney transplant, so we struggled with mask versus not mask. My son is going into high school. He's fully vaccinated. He is excited to go back to in-person learning. He's excited at the possibility of going back and maybe not wearing a mask. However, my daughter is under the age of 12. She's not able to get a COVID-19 vaccine yet. So I'd like to turn the argument I've heard this evening from the parents here on its head a little bit. If forcing people who haven't been vaccinated to wear a mask is a form of discrimination and opens people up to bullying, I would like to know how we're going to prevent kids who choose to wear a mask, if they're made optional, from being bullied. I've seen it in my own neighborhood already this summer. Kids that will not play with my daughter, they won't go near her because her parents have not told her what the purpose of a mask is. They say, "Oh, she's sick. I can't play with her. I won't talk to her. I won't go near her." Okay? This is a microcosm we're going to see in our schools. So, as to last year, kids were not robbed of a year of education. From my perspective, I saw a lot of teachers working harder than I've ever seen them work. I got a lot more emails from teachers and support staff late at night when I thought they'd probably not be working, going through their inboxes, catching up on email, just like I was working from home and pulling some kind of eye hours myself. So, also, my kids were not forced by this school onto any form of social media. I call on the school board to follow the CDC guidance. Unvaccinated individuals should be wearing a mask. I understand y'all disagree, but it's my turn to talk. Okay? The conditions of COVID-19 for anybody who's under the age of 12 or an unvaccinated older than 12 have not necessarily changed except for the fact that more people around you are vaccinated and give you less chance of catching the virus.
Christine? Christine Dittman? Brian Kim?
Hi, my name is Brian Kim. My wife and I are both physicians. We have three small boys that are in the Barrington High School district. I'd like to offer a little contrasting viewpoint, so I just ask that you hear me out. So as I mentioned, she and I have been working in hospitals ever since this pandemic started. We have been wearing masks 10 to 12 hours a day, still continue to do so even though we're fully vaccinated. We've both witnessed numerous patients who have succumbed and died to COVID. My wife caught COVID herself while taking care of patients at the hospital. She couldn't be here tonight because she's working actually tonight. Despite being in her 30s, absolutely healthy, she developed severe respiratory disease, was in the hospital for seven days, almost put on a ventilator. I mention this only to point out that even though we may individually feel that we ourselves or our children have low risk, we don't know. There's some degree of unpredictability to this. It's easy to forget how deadly COVID can be, especially during periods like this where we have low infection rates and societal reopening is occurring in our area. I urge everybody, however, to remember that it's because of higher masking and vaccination rates that we're enjoying some of the freedoms we have now to reopen. We only need to look at states like Missouri where low rates of masking and vaccination have led to ongoing severe outbreaks with hospitals filled to capacity, requesting additional ventilators, and nearing previous winter surge levels of infection. While children are less likely to develop severe symptoms or require hospitalization from COVID compared to adults, recent COVID-19 data is actually changing. The Delta variant is becoming more prevalent, it's more contagious, and even amongst children, hospitalization rates are increasing. Children can also develop long-term complications from COVID, including multi-inflammatory syndrome, which causes persistent fever, pain, severe heart and kidney damage. Summertime is a period when even endemic disease such as influenza is at a low. Kids are not in school, we're outdoors, we're spaced, we're spending a lot of time separate from each other. However, we know that in the fall, flu comes back, COVID's not going away. COVID, the same conditions that lead to increased flu also lead to increased COVID. I believe that most people served by Barrington 220 want and realize the importance of in-person schooling for our children. Believe me, when my wife was sick, I had no idea what the heck I was doing with remote learning. However, I ask the board to keep into consideration how to provide the safest environment for every child. Kids who are under 12, who cannot be vaccinated, kids who have immunocompromised conditions, or have people in their household who are immunocompromised. This, I ask them to please protect vulnerable populations while giving every child in the district the opportunity to attend school in a safe environment. Thank you.
Mike Whaley? Mike Whaley? Okay, that actually concludes our public comment. Very quickly, please.
Just as a...
Can you please identify yourself?
Yes, Colleen Conisack. I'm a... Within the district. And just as a member who serves on a board locally, I want to thank each of you for your time here this evening. I know how difficult it is to sit in your seats and have members of the public be accusatory towards you. It's a difficult job. You don't get paid for it. And I really appreciate everybody's commitment to listening to the public here tonight. You are a new board. There are new fresh members. There are great old members. You have a new superintendent. You can do amazing things. And I just want to thank you for your time and for being considerate of all the people who came to speak to you tonight. Thank you, Colleen.
I'm just adding your name here so you don't forget. Okay. All right, so that concludes public comment. Next up is Dr. Hunt's report, and then we'll go into our COVID protocol discussion as we discussed. And then let's do a time check after that. How about?
That's great. First of all, thank you very much for everyone being here tonight and commenting. I do want to just take a minute before we get into the protocol conversation to thank this entire community. Teachers tonight, kind of a difficult environment to stand up, and I appreciate your kind words. And I'm extremely excited with my family to be here. I'm very appreciative of the Board of Education that was in place when we went through the selection process, as well as appreciative of the new members that are here tonight. Few will understand the amount of time and commitment and energy it takes to do these jobs well. And I certainly respect and appreciate you stepping forward and representing your community. I have a feeling for many of you, COVID-19 and a pandemic was not on the list of things you thought you'd deal with when you ran for the Board of Education. Also, I want to recognize Dr. Brian Harris for his work in transition on his service to Barrington 220, as well as the Executive Council, Janine Stark. Just have done an amazing job in helping support me and my family get here. So I appreciate that very much. When I was evaluating Barrington as an option in terms of my professional endeavors, obviously, the school district has many things to be proud of and accolades to in place that are attractive to candidates. But it was actually the people, when I came here and kind of did a solo recruiting mission with my wife that we sat next to in restaurants and talked to about this school and the community, that drew me here. It's the type of individuals and the type of kids that are here that make this place so special. The type, for example, when you're driving from Cleveland, Ohio in a U-Haul truck and your movers decide to cancel on you, you put something online and two high school students, Cameron Smith and Connor Riley, show up your house and help you unload your truck. That's the kind of community that Barrington is, and I'm very appreciative and honored to have the opportunity to work with all of you and join you as a community member in moving forward. It is, COVID-19 is a test to every community. It's not unique here. I know you feel like this is unique to Barrington, but it's a test everywhere. And it's the communities that realize how difficult this is and the ability to come together to try to navigate through this final chapter, hopefully, of COVID, that will lead to success and get us to the other side. So, I again appreciate everyone being here. I appreciate the passion you have for your schools and know we take our responsibilities very seriously. I will transition and try to update the board. I joined July 1 officially. We were waiting for guidance, and of course, it plops on Friday before Tuesday meeting. So, our team has worked diligently to kind of understand what that guidance means. We want to provide an overview for the Board of Education on kind of where we see that and the information we have for you, and then we'll move into that conversation. So I'm going to ask Beth Jones to step up. Beth didn't realize that I was going to completely hijack her day this morning. When I came into her office, there was a legal webinar that we were able to sit through. Really helped with some of the questions that we were wrestling with. And I think it's important that we review that at a very high level, the information that we were provided today. So this is out of, one of our legal firms offered the presentation, and I can't find the name, unfortunately. No, it was not Franzyk. Beth, who was...
It was Kriya Bocek.
It was Kriya Bocek who put on a presentation this morning. And then I did speak with Franzyk after that to kind of verify some of the information as well. So, we're going to talk kind of at a high level as we currently see things. I think it's important to note that within this, you know, obviously, student safety is something we always have to worry about and can be concerned with. Our number-one priority remains and will remain educating our kids and moving them forward. And regardless of where this ends tonight, or next week, or in two weeks, we have to be cognizant and aware, we may be put in a position where we have to pivot. That's a reality, and I know you don't want to hear that, but it's a reality of this situation. So I think we make the best decisions we can based on the information we have at the time, and we kind of need to continue to evaluate numbers cases and where we're going, you know, locally. I am a huge advocate for local control. I fought for it my entire educational career. We've had those conversations even here in Illinois. And I think there is an opportunity here, finally, to engage in this conversation and look at your data locally and make decisions locally. So, we're going to walk through some of that. I'm going to turn it over to Beth, and we'll kind of just piggyback back and forth. And certainly, if you have questions on something that we are getting into, just, board, please stop us along the way. We'll do our best to answer them.
Thank you for letting me talk with you. I know this is a super difficult decision. I do want to say that we're only making this decision because we do have our kids coming back in the fall, and that is a celebration to have our kids coming back in person. Got to look for some of the silver linings. And I'm just presenting information to you tonight so that you have all of the data so you can make an informed decision. This is not the administration saying, "We feel we should do one thing or another." So please keep that in mind. So, we have four options currently that we're talking about that are just options, that are things that the board needs to look at. We have the four options in front of you, the universal masking option, non-vaccinated masking option, a phased masking, and masks optional. So, I'm going to go through what all of those are, and some of them are self-explanatory. We don't have a plan behind any of these because we're waiting for direction from the board to let us know which one you would like, and then we would make a plan as an administration to make sure that we follow what we need to do to keep our students and staff safe. The universal masking option is straightforward. Everybody is required to wear a mask, whether you've been vaccinated or not. Hold your booze. The next one, and your booze. The non-vaccinated masking is only for those who have not been vaccinated would wear a mask. Parents might need to let us know the status of whether or not kids have been vaccinated. That's another option. The next one is phased masking. We start with maybe some levels, start the year not wearing a mask. Others are required to wear a mask. And then we see what kind of data we get. And the data is just looking at transmission, the vaccination percentages, and also if there is any, you know, the levels of COVID cases within our community. And then the last one is masks optional. Everybody in the district could choose whether or not they want to wear a mask. We did talk about, this was given to us as an option, that some districts are asking parents to sign a waiver saying, "I don't have a problem if my child wears a mask," or doesn't wear a mask. Okay, so those are the four options that we're talking about. This is something that was explained to us. If you have more mitigations in place, you know, the district does want to protect students. We also don't want kids to get sick. We don't want parents to be suing the district. That's another reality. And that's just to show you, if we have more mitigations in place, you have less liability, more toward immunity. Obviously, it goes the other way, and that's the political stuff we've been talking about all night. The prevention strategies that we have in place, we have nine strategies up there. We do everything in this district right now except for the surveillance testing. So what we're talking about is really layering our services, I mean, our supports for kids. If you take something, if you take the layer off, they recommend that you do it slowly. If you take the layer off, like you take the masks away, you need to look at the other options up there and determine, are there other areas where we maybe need to increase what we're doing? Like our ventilation, we're doing that, you know? So that's something to look at to improve in that area. So, that is my really short presentation to you on what the options are, board. Do you have questions? Do you have comments or any discussion that you would like to have? Now would be the time to do that amongst the board.
Start with questions?
So, I mean, to be clear, the decisions that we, or the guidance that we may give tonight, it's flexible, right? Depending on, you know, what's... Like, for instance, if in September, the CDC says, you know, kids 11 and under, vaccination is open to them, that may, we could maybe revisit at some point. I mean, like, I'm just saying that...
Yes, everything is, it's ever-changing. If that's what you're saying, that's correct. What the information we have today is actually different from the information that we got on Friday. Because on Friday, the interpretation was, these are going to be the mandates. And like we've talked about tonight, there is wiggle room for districts. It is not a mandate. They are recommendations.
Right, so what we decide, knowing what we know now...
Yes.
It could potentially, it would help the community, I know, see where we're heading, but we could still have some flex. It's not like this is what stands for the 21, 22 school year.
I don't think anything is going to be able to stand for the 21, 22 school year because we don't know what's going to happen with the rates of people getting COVID. If, you know, it decreases, if people get vaccinated, I mean, if we don't have a lot of sickness in our community and things are going well, obviously, we'll go one direction. If we see that the variance does, you know, become an issue for us, then we'll have to do something different. So, I think it's an ever-changing topic, but I think right now, what we're talking about is... And I don't think you actually have to make a decision. I think you have to make a decision of what you would like the administration to look into and determine, like, what plans would we have for that if we did it. That's just a recommendation.
I think it's really important to be clear to the community. Delta variant, something explodes, we have a mass breakout, it will shift to change. We will have to change. That is a possibility. Just like if you went with phased masking, if everything was working great, we would want to pull masks back. The change would be pulling back. Change may be in quarantine procedures. Those things can be pulled back and changed as well. So, I think the answer to your question is yes, and it could work either way.
So the understanding is that the mitigations could loosen or they could tighten depending on what our status is in the area?
And your position in terms of where you stand with this can be balanced... can be balanced with different mitigation strategies. So I heard no social distancing. Maybe you say, "We are going to strive, we're going to, we're going to hit three feet. We're going to strive for four feet where we can, but we're going to pull back on masks and/or we're going to do random volunteer testing." You can put other mitigations in place to balance what you pull away. That's, I think, the point of the slide that was shared on prevention strategies.
Are there any options on quarantine as well, when, on updating quarantine?
They have not made any recommendations for changes for that at this time. They are saying continue with the quarantining, the process that we have in place for-
We don't currently have a process in place because we don't have a remote education system.
No, we do for contact tracing and quarantining.
We do.
Are we at six feet right now or three feet?
No.
I'm sorry, can we get back, if a child is good, contact trace and has to go home for 10 days and is unvaccinated, they will be on Zoom with their teacher?
We don't have a plan exactly as what that's going to look like, whether it'll be, they will be on Zoom or whether we will do something alternate. We don't know at this point. That's why we have to make a determination of what we want to do, and then we'll make that determination. That's aside from the masks though.
And I think that, you know, I guess what we're looking for is guidance in these buckets tonight. And we come back to you saying, "Okay, we've worked with our staff, we've talked to our teachers. Here's how we would best handle quarantining," and bring that information back to you. I think before we, we spend a lot of time detailing all these areas, narrowing the focus for us would be extremely helpful so we can bring those details back to you.
Just to clarify, current quarantine process, are we at six feet with a positive exposure or three feet?
We're at three feet with the, with the recommendations that we have now. They're talking about if you're three feet, you try to keep the six feet if you don't have masks. If you can't, we want kids back in school. So they're saying you can go to the three feet.
And it's the two weeks with a negative PCR still?
It depends. It depends on if it's quarantined for 10 days or two weeks if you're not. But those are different topics than the mask wearing, which I could share information with you.
I think it's important to discuss that at some point as well. But I know that this is the-
As we discuss, I'm trying to make a list of planned attributes, like quarantining procedures. That would be part of it. You know, what prevention strategies we're going to have in place. So as I, as you talk, I'm going to make a list and I'll try to summarize it as we get to the end too.
I think it would be very helpful to make my decision knowing how many percentage-wise students and faculty are vaccinated. I know there's- Hip hop, I understand that. So I'm not looking for names. I'm looking for percentages.
Yeah.
Do we have 50%? Do we have 80%?
Right now-
It would be so much easier to make a decision if I know where the protection levels are.
Right.
That's right. I'm asking just the vaccination rate right now. That's all I'm asking.
Please. Right now, the data that we can get is from 16 to 64. So it doesn't, they're not delineating students right now at the Lake County Health Department. When you look up on the website, you can see through like COVID Act Now, you can see zip codes, but it's, it's, it's looking at all vaccinations. It's not breaking it down by the age groups at this point for us. And we don't have that through the Lake County Health Department yet either.
Do they have that information that they, they could help advise us on? I know one of the guidances is that we should be consulting with them, right?
Yes, but they don't have that information for us at this point, no. And that's something we're looking for too, just seeing, so we can see percentages of people who are vaccinated and who are not that are within our school community.
So I'm just going to give my opinion to get the ball rolling here. I believe it's time to return risk management back to the parents. I think we should- Thanks. Can I, sorry, thank you. I ran for one reason and one reason only. I felt this board was not representing the community, and that is why I wanted to run. Here's my personal opinion on this thing. We started this well over a year ago. It was two weeks to slow the spread. Then it went, "Let's keep the hospitals from being overrun." Check. Then it was, "Wait until we have a vaccine." Check. Then it was, "Let's vaccinate our frontline workers." We did it. Let's vaccinate, vaccinate those most at risk, our essential workers, thankfully our teachers. We did it. Then it was, "A certain percentage had to be vaccinated." In Illinois, we, at least 90% of those 65 and older have been vaccinated with at least one dose. And we are at 70%, 12 and over. That is the goal that the government has set. We've met it here in Illinois. Check. Then it was transmission levels. Currently, we're at 1.3 per five, 1.35% rolling average for positivity in our, in our area. And then even more importantly than positivity, I looked up hospitalization rates. Hospitalization rates in all of Illinois, currently in all of Illinois, we have 108 COVID patients occupying ICU beds. 108 in all of Illinois. So I ask, here's my, what is it, what's enough? Like what is, what's the end game? I, we have no idea if they're going to approve a vaccine for 12 and under. We have, states, we are one of only, how many states? A handful of states still mandating masks in our school. When are we going to free our children who are not statistically affected by COVID? My children go to school where they say, "Be a hero, wear a mask." I don't want my child to be a hero. You know, our children don't need to be heroes. They need to be children.
There are board members who should all take guidance from. There are the board members who should all take-
The board, please, the board needs to have a discussion. Let's allow the board to have a discussion.
That's where I stand.
So for clarification, Dr. Hunt, you sent us some recommendations yesterday for more consideration. Do these four options supersede those considerations or recommendations? Or would you like to share those?
It certainly changed based on this morning. Our ability to go in these to the others, other categories, in my opinion. I think going in a phased or mask optional direction is, should be our, kind of our threshold or our, our direction moving forward based on the-
Is your current recommendation that we select one of these four options in terms of giving guidance?
Yes, because we, we have a lot of work to do administratively to put the details together on what these look, you know? This won't be popular. We have to have mitigation strategies in place. They have to be there. So we need to know what we're dealing with on this side of things. So we come back to you saying, "We feel like this is an appropriate balance of mitigation strategies if you're moving in one of these directions with masking."
And then to the board, Katie, thank you so much for sharing your thoughts. Could we maybe start on a point where we know we have some consensus? Or we could potentially know that we have consensus as a board and then move on from there? So for instance, you know, we know that 12 and up can get vaccinations, right? So is there, is there a possibility, is there a possibility that, that we could start at, is there a possibility that we could start at considering mask optional for our middle schools and our high school? As a, as a, as a starting point, as a starting point.
As a starting point and then- Erin, I want to just, so are you suggesting, are you asking that for 12, age 12 and up, we would do the non-vaccinated masking? Because you're asking if that's, if we all could agree to that as a minimum?
Yeah, either non-vaccinated or phased. In terms of consensus that we should, in terms of consensus that we should, we can allow mask optional for those who can have the capacity to get the vaccine. Not saying that you must have the vaccine to be mask optional, but those-
That's discrimination.
What I am saying is we may have consensus around our middle schools and our high school being mask optional, and could we use that as a starting point? Could we discuss that? And then move to the other.
What do the board members think? What do the board members think?
I'm trying to see where we have some alignment right now as a board. So we have a starting point.
Thank you, Steve.
From everything I just heard, our big issue is liability. Our liability will be managed. We're going to mitigation things in place. There's no reason that masks can't be optional. And let me clarify, we're not saying that masks are not an option. If you want to wear a mask, you can wear a mask. When you're in a classroom, if I'm hearing, if I'm quote correctly, we're going to be separated by three feet. So the mitigation tactics are in place. We're spending $2.8 million on air filtration. We, we're doing everything, and I think we're doing more. I've spoken to my own principal. We're doing not just what we need to do, we're doing more. There's no reason why we shouldn't be mask optional.
What I'm proposing is that, can we consider something that is not an all or nothing approach?
I feel like, why, why are we continuing to punish our youngest learners? Our kindergartners were in school last year. Our kindergartners were in school last year for two and a half, for a couple months, for two and a half hours a day. The teachers did the best they could. There was no enrichment opportunity. We're then going to make those little learners come back in, stick a mask on their face. They're not, we're not, like, what are we doing? I, our youngest kids should not continue to be punished for a disease that statistically does not affect them.
My concern is that our 11-year-olds and under do not even have the capacity for vaccination. Like their parents don't- This question is for my fellow board members, okay?
If the board can't have a discussion, we're going to take a quick break? I really need to, the board needs to talk. Let the board talk. I can't even hear someone sitting two feet away from me. Please.
Very disrespectful. I am willing, I am willing to give concessions to those who are 12 and older regardless of vaccination because those who are, those whose parents choose to vaccinate their kids and those students who want to vaccinate and feel they are protected will be protected regardless, right? Those who are, those who are 11 and under, their parents cannot even have the capacity for them to get vaccinated, and that is my concern. For me, the game changer is when kids 11 and under have the capacity to get vaccinated, then that's a parental choice. Then whether or not, then if the parents choose to vaccinate them-
Can you guys hear? Can you hear, can you hear her?
No, I can't hear anything.
Can I just say something to your community? Okay. I am thrilled that you guys are here, and I think all of us are happy to have your input. And we have listened to public comment for a very long time. And I appreciate what every single person said. There are things that people said that I personally agree with. There are things that people said that I personally don't agree with. And I don't think anyone at the board table interrupted. And I appreciate that you're passionate. If there's anything to be passionate about, it's about your kids. But to this extent, we've got to get through this conversation. And I know there are things you're going to agree with that are said and things you aren't going to agree with that are said. But I ask you, if you could just quietly bear with us until we get through it, we won't have to take breaks and we can all still participate instead of just doing this longevity thing and waiting for people to leave. So can you agree to that?
Yes, thank you, Angela.
But we already voted, we wanted our kids back in school last year, and the same board that's sitting there told us no. So what you're telling me right now is you're going to tell me no again. That is bullshit.
Thank you, Angela. I appreciate that. Erin, can you please continue?
Yes, so my concern is for those who, parents who would like to vaccinate their kids, who don't even have the capacity to vaccinate their kids, right? And so, and so, right, for me, the game changer would be, okay, we can vaccinate kids 11 and under. And so then those, those vaccinated kids could potentially, if you believe that the vaccination protects your kid, could be protected from unvaccinated kids who, who do not want to mask. And then that mask, then for me, once that happens, I think mask optional would make sense because you have the option to either fully vaccinate your kid or not. I mean, it is your choice. So my, I, I wonder if we could consider coming to consensus on- I'm trying to have a discussion with my fellow board members, please. So I'm wondering if we can come to a consensus for now, at least on the part with, with 12 and up or sixth grade and up, if logistically that's easier to handle. Because kids- Because those kids do have the potential to get vaccinated if they would like or if their parents would like. And then that is in line with what IDPH is recommending, what CDC is recommending. And so, like we were saying-
So could an example of the, of the phased masking be something that Erin is talking about? So we could, we would have masks required if people are not vaccinated under the age of- phased in once vaccination become available as one of the prevention strategies? Is that an example? I'm just asking for an example. I would like an answer to my question.
Yeah, the phase could look a lot of different ways. The phase could follow the vaccination. Phase could be, you start sixth grade and up in kind of mask optional situation. You then phase in the other elementaries as you go once you look at and continue to monitor the data. So you can, you can structure phasing however you want. That's what that option is.
So phased masking has the end goal of getting to a mask optional state, right? I mean, that, it's just an incremental way of getting there instead of saying, boom, all of a sudden.
Exactly, exactly.
I think it would be helpful if we did choose a phased masking stance. Like Katie said, I think it would be helpful to have some end game handles in terms of, okay, if, when we go at mask optional for all students, does that mean all students have access to the vaccination? Or does that mean we have a certain, right, exactly. Or does that mean we have a certain number of hospitalizations or lower? Or a certain number of positive cases are lower? I mean, what, I think, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying, I think if we do phased masking, we need to have some of those handles from the administration.
I totally agree with that.
Just for clarity.
I totally agree. You need benchmarks and data. We learned about this Friday. There was no way for us to pull that together. If that's the option the board directs us to go in, we will spend some time talking with the health department, try to figure out those benchmarks and bring them back to the board.
And then that would be helpful for the community to know, okay-
It would give, it would give direction.
Are we talking to all four health departments? Or are we continuing to work primarily with Lake County?
I typically, I typically have worked with Lake County. I sit, every Wednesday morning, superintendents and health department are on the, on the phone with the Lake County Health Department.
So tomorrow morning, you will have some input from the county health department?
Correct.
The mandate, the requirements that have been handed down to us is for us to, we can, we can make changes as a local body in conjunction with our local health department. That's what it says. That's what I read. Does anybody disagree with that? Okay, so tomorrow you would meet with our local health department. So-
But, Sienna, what more are we going to find out that we don't have access to right now? I mean, I got to be honest.
Let's give them a chance to talk. I'm, I'm not sure I'm ready to go all the way to mask optional right now. Let me take a vote on that without, without seeing a plan. I'd like to see the plan. And we have to give Dr. Hunt and his team time to show us what their plan looks like. They have had, this came out on Friday.
They said you couldn't do a plan without getting direction from the board.
Right, we need to give them which plan we want to see. Is it, is it- Leah, do you have anything you want to add? I want to hear from all the board members.
Okay, so, so it's really hard to think clearly. I feel like I'm at a baseball game and the team is going, "Hey, batter, batter." I mean, we listen to the community, so I respectfully ask that you listen to us and don't heckle us or comment or cheer because it's really distracting. I think it's important to-
Okay, Leah, please finish your comment, please.
Okay, so I realize, no, it is not- Okay, so, I realize, no, it is not your turn. I would just like to speak to the.
Please, Leah. All right, it is time for us to take a break. The board is trying to have a discussion and we are not able to have a discussion. I'm going to ask that we please take a five-minute break. Can we just go to the other room? I'm asking for order and I'm not getting it, and we can't have a conversation. If the community cannot be quiet and let the board have a conversation, we are going to take a five-minute recess. Angela, would you please request again? Okay. Can I have, do we have a motion to take a break? Do we have a second? Okay, can we have a conversation at the board table, please? All right. Next time, we're going to, we're going to move to a break, okay? Thank you, sir. Leah, continue, please, with your thoughts.
So I would just like to acknowledge that there are a lot of people here tonight, but there are also a lot of people watching this meeting from home, and I would expect that some of them are watching at home because they're concerned about masking and they're concerned about being in a crowd of people who are not masked and perhaps not vaccinated. I also wish to say that I don't think it's fair to blame the school board for closing school last year, for having kids be at home. I think there was, there was a pandemic in the world and school was closed all over the world. I think mental health is affected and it is not fair to blame the school board because students had to be at home because there was a pandemic and people were dying. I don't think it's fair to say that we are heartless people who don't care about this. Every single one of us has been affected and know someone who personally who died or was critically ill or was in the hospital last year. We do care about this. Our children were affected and that's not my concern as a school board, it's everyone's children, not my children. So we're looking at what's best for Barrington for all students. Every single one of us wants kids back in school, and I think we should really be rejoicing that that's where we're going. Kids are all going to be in school five days a week. We're getting what we've been looking forward to for a long time, and students are going to benefit from that. When we look at, when we look at all the things that we're doing to mitigate illness here, I think it's important that our district is doing a lot of them. I think we've been successful, you know, and that's why we're at the place we're at right now. It's also summertime. I think some of the comments that were made tonight were very valid, some of the information that's shared is very important. I think it's important to go in a positive direction. We want to have school open, we want to keep school open. If we change our mask policy, we want to keep that policy. We don't want to go backwards. So I think it's important to take it in steps. I think there's a vaccine for 12 and older, so I think we can talk about mask optional for kids that are vaccinated. I think also that there are kids, there are, there are kids that are not able to get a vaccine, that are 12 and under, who are going to be in school with teachers and exposed to other family members and other people in the community. And I think it's important that we take care of the safety of our students.
So Leah, if I could summarize for you, it sounds to me like you are leaning towards a phased masking or a non-vaccinated masking approach?
Yes.
Which?
I would like to have 12 and older be vaccinated, vaccinated, unvaccinated masking, and I would like to look at phased for the younger children, for elementary and 6th grade.
So would you consider that to be a phased masking?
Yes.
All right.
And I would like to get some, I would like to get the input from the Lake County Local Health Department because that's kind of where the CDC would go, that we've got, every area is different. And if the Lake County gives us more information about our area.
I can't hear, she's sitting right next to me.
I think it's important to consider that because they are our experts, they are our doctors who are our experts.
Katie, you had a question for Leah?
I appreciate your comments, and not discounting this, but I would like to point out, because I counted, we received seven emails asking to keep the mask mandate, and I couldn't even count how many we asked to remove the mask mandate. Plus, we were also filed a petition that was signed by close to 500 people asking to remove, asking, over 500 people asking to make masks. I just feel like we are supposed to represent our community, that is why we are elected. I am not, I am not willing to vote for a policy where we, I'm not willing to vote for a policy where we mask unvaccinated children. I'm not willing to vote.
So is it fair for me to see, Katie, that you are, want to see a plan for mask optional?
I would like to see mask optional, that is fair.
Erin, you are somewhere between non-vaccinated and phased masking?
I would like to work toward having mask optional. I think that is the end goal. None of us like masks, like, we don't want to. I am concerned.
Can you hear, can you guys hear?
I am concerned for our elementary students who do not have the capacity to get vaccinated should their parents. So. I'm in favor, I'm in favor of implementing a responsible phased mask optional for our elementary students. I am fine, I am okay, my concession, even though, even though I have a preference for, you know, for making mask optional for vaccinated students, I understand that's very difficult to enforce, and so my concession is that I am fine with mask optional for 12 and up. So for, and then because of the enforcement, you know, because essentially what we're doing is the honor system, I know it's difficult to enforce 6th grade, I am okay with our junior, junior, for our middle schools, I'm going to say junior high, date myself, I'm fine with our middle schools and our high school being mask optional at this point.
So Erin, if Dr. Hunt and staff came back with a phased masking plan that incorporates those different strategies, mitigation strategies, that gets us to mask optional across all ages, is that something that you could consider?
Yes, and I'm okay at this point saying that I am fine with mask optional for our middle schools and high school. And I would like to, I would like to get to a point where we can be a mask optional for a K-35. I just need to know, I just need to know what, I just need to know what those metrics are to get us there. Does that mean, are we basing that on whether vaccinations are available? Are we basing that on other metrics, things like that?
I'm just going to say we can't base on vaccination availability, because I will tell you, me personally. Sure, I would say we can't base on vaccination availability, because I'll tell you, a lot of parents in this room are telling us they're not going to vaccinate their kids.
Strategies, can we put up the nine strategies, so we can see the nine strategies?
It's not, it's not vaccinated.
Steve, I understand that, and they have, they have the right, listen, they have the right, can you hear me? I understand that, and they have the right to not vaccinate their kids if that is their choice. But parents who would like to vaccinate their kids, I think those parents should also have the option to vaccinate their kids. And those, those, those parents with kids like me who are 11 and under, I have one who is in the process of getting vaccinated, one who cannot yet get vaccinated, I would like to eventually vaccinate her, but until she is vaccinated, I'm not comfortable with her not wearing a mask while she's in.
The board is having a discussion. I'm going to have to ask people to leave if we cannot have a discussion.
So, so for me, for me, the threshold, it would change, like if the CDC were to say, okay, we can fully vaccinate all kids, then I am comfortable going mask optional. So, but I'm not saying that all kids need to get vaccinated.
Sure, so Erin.
Does that make sense?
I understand. Can I clarify that?
Please, Steve. Steve, go ahead.
So can I clarify? So, but I, if I understand this correctly, your daughter can still wear a mask. It's just that on children. And I think, and I think that's, and I think that's the crux of the argument here.
So she can still wear a mask, but she is extra vulnerable if unvaccinated kids are not vaccinated.
So I'm going to try and try to get.
Because she cannot be vaccinated.
Are you on a mask optional? You want to go to the mask optional?
I do. However, I am, I will, I will work with Erin to understand what we can do, because we do need to get down that path.
Yeah, I want us to come to a consensus, I really do.
Yeah, and I'm with you. So I guess my point is, you know, you know, we spoke yesterday one-on-one, and we talked about this, and I want to re-present this to you. You know, how about a point where we say, you know, if you're on a bus, because public transportation, if you take a public school bus now, or a public bus nowadays, you're wearing a mask. So for our children, if you're on a school bus, fine, let's put a mask on those kids. No?
Well, let's just, so what, I'm not sure we have four people that are ready to jump to mask optional, I'm just going to make that statement. I'm not sure if we do or if we hear, we've never heard a vote from Barry and Angela.
Okay, well, if I may, all right, so.
Please, Angela, take your turn.
And, is that okay? Are you ready for me? All right. So, and please don't cheer. Okay, just, let's just, let's just keep this going. My preference is to go mask optional. Please don't cheer. I understand and appreciate that Erin is trying to come to a middle ground, okay? I do not feel comfortable landing on this middle ground, but at the same time, I want to do something good.
Correct, that's exactly.
I have done nothing good for this community lately. It feels very difficult to move forward. So to the extent that Erin is willing to come to middle school and high school, are, listen to me, I agree with you. I agree with you. I don't know if there are four people who agree with you. Okay, okay, so my, my vote would be mask optional. If we do not have that, then my vote would be mask optional for middle school and high school. Now, okay, I know you guys don't like that, and that's fine. Give me a minute to persuade my board members here, okay? So just hold on. All right? So I, every meeting, I come here and I bring my board member oath, and I forgot it. Go figure. So I had to look it up, and I always highlight what we're talking about. What is my responsibility in this meeting? All right, so here are my keys. I shall respect taxpayer interest, do not cheer. I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation from the community, it's in the oath that we take. And I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students. And that is why I am taking the approach that I am, okay? We are leaders, and we are given the job to hear community input, look at our own anecdotal evidence, we look at the children in our district, we can talk with our administration, our superintendent, and see whether we should make a decision that is a recommendation or decisions is based upon our own experience and knowledge as community leaders. We were community leaders in this whole area when we moved our start times. People looked at our district, District 220 moved their start times, we should move our start times. They looked at us when we started the incubator program. That was my very first thing when I started the board. I helped write an agreement where we were licensing the right to use our curriculum. We decided that, and we are good at it. You know, Sandra, when you and I are on policy, or when we were, we were writing policy before we were even getting it, that was coming down from our Illinois leaders. We can do this. We have the capacity to put in other mitigation strategies, so we're not putting masks on little kids. Stop it! I trust our administrators and I trust our district to be innovative and to look at all of the things we've learned over the last 16 months and utilize that, and, and, and create a situation where kids are all treated equally throughout our district, through kindergarten through 12. And I understand, Erin, what you're saying as far as, you know, when I have the choice to vaccinate my child as an elementary student, that's what I will choose to do. But these parents are saying, I want the choice to decide whether to put a mask on my elementary child, and I don't know how to say one choice outweighs the other. So as leaders, as intelligent, heartfelt people who do love this community, I ask you to consider all of the research that's been done. I mean, I feel for these parents that have gone out and just tried to dig through studies, and I'm not going to compare one study to another because everyone's right, okay? You want to say that, you know, masking kills giraffes? I'm sure you can find a study that says that. If you want to find a study that says that masks will save the universe, we can find a study that says that. It's up to us now. And I don't really know what else we're going to get by working with the Illinois Department of Health or the Lake County Department of Health. And I understand the hesitation, I get it. But I feel like at this point, we've got a room full of people that are coming to us for answers, and we've told them, hey, we know you've got some really hard decisions to make, and when we keep waiting, it just creates more of this discord, more of this frustration.
I hear you, Angela, I don't feel like we're waiting, I feel like we're gathering the data. So I agree with what you're saying, wholeheartedly. I think everybody at this table would like to get to a mask optional place. I think the question is how we get there. So may I, may I ask this? And then Barry, I want to make sure you get a chance to talk too, if you would. But one, one, how difficult is it, if we all agree that, you know, getting to mask optional is a goal, right? I think we do, I think we do. And maybe that can happen on August 20th, and maybe it will happen on September 20th, I don't know, make it up to dates. But if we ask the administration to give us a plan for the phased, phased masking that gets us to the goal of mask optional, is that something we can all agree to take a look at? And how much more difficult would it be to develop what the plan would be if we went right to mask optional to start with, to do it? Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I'd say that we, obviously the mitigation balance that we would move towards with mask optional would be a little different than a phased-in approach. That's, that, that would be the nuances, and there's no science to this. We would just have to sit down and brainstorm and work through this.
Is that something that other districts are probably going to do after they hear from the health department tomorrow?
Twenty districts already.
Some districts, some districts have already come out and made these decisions.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Some districts have come out and made these decisions already. It's, you know, in Illinois, it's, in Illinois, it's different, you know, unit district is different than, you know, a high school district. To, I've seen statements come out from high school districts already, where mask optional, you know, because of the vaccine, and I think the high school's a pretty easy place to go in that direction. The elementary folks, I've talked to a few today, they're working through this right now.
I think, I think that would give us more information.
So how much time, how much time do you need to put this together? We are having a conversation. I've asked many times, Angela's asked, Leah's asked, and asked, are you pleased to let us finish our conversation? How much time?
I would not want to wait until August 10th. I would want to turn around and give this information back to the board in the next two weeks.
In the next two weeks? That seems reasonable to me.
Sandra, you are pulling us to see where we were with the four phases? Do you continue that? Because I'm unclear on where, I know Steve is favoring mask optional, and Katie's favoring mask optional. Angela, you're also favoring mask optional, right?
I think we all share the goal of mask optional.
I want to get to mask optional right now. I'm comfortable with mask optional for middle schools and high school, and a phased masking approach for elementary.
All right, so I hear phased, I hear phased from you, Leah.
Are you phased?
I'm unvaccinated masking.
I can't hear you.
For six through 12, I'm unvaccinated masking.
Tell me again.
So could that be part of a phased approach, though, is the question?
Yes.
So you could support looking at a plan that Dr. Hunt and team put together on a phased masking.
Back up there. So are you non-vaccinated masking, Leah, or phased masking? Which one? Or somewhere in between?
So I, if anyone cares, I'm for non-vaccinated masking for six through 12, and I am for masking for elementary, and then phased masking for all of us.
So I think what Leah, could you hear what Leah said?
No.
So she said essentially very similar to what Erin said.
I'm sorry. I don't think she's saying what Erin's saying. I think she's saying only vaccinated children can take masks. Is that what you're saying?
She's saying at this time.
She's not saying what Erin's saying.
At this time, she's saying that.
Right.
So I asked if that could be part of a phased masking plan, and Leah said yes. That could be part of a phased masking plan.
Yeah, I said mask optional for middle school. Mine was mask optional for middle schools and high school, and phased masking for elementary. That's what I meant. So we're... I'm taking... We're taking a poll. We're taking a poll.
Please let us have our discussion. Order!
And so what Leah, what I heard from Leah was, Leah, correct me if I'm wrong, I heard non-vaccinated masking from you, right? Can you say that one more time?
If the crowd will let me talk, which I don't feel will. I am suggesting from six through 12, non-vaccinated masking, and for elementary, masking.
I can't hear you. Can you say that one more time?
She's for non-vaccinated.
I'm saying for six through 12, non-vaccinated masking, and for elementary, masking, and phasing masking for everyone.
Okay. I think that's pretty similar.
We are responsible for the lives of the kids and their health, the finishment of our...
Barry.
We are all about your responsibility.
We are trying to have a conversation. Please.
I suggest you resign.
All right.
You rescinding for us? How does this work?
Guys, guys.
Listen, we have got to get through this conversation.
This isn't...
We haven't even heard someone. We've got to get through this conversation. We can do that with you in the room, or we can do that with you outside of the room. So please let the board work through this.
You'll make the decisions when we're done, so you're not under pressure. We understand how this works.
There are three.
Three right now, is what I'm hearing.
Four. We have three.
I respectfully suggest, this is not a community discussion, this is a board discussion.
Okay. Barry, can we hear from you? Please. Are you ready to talk, or would you like to take a break first?
I don't know. I'm willing to talk if people will give a little respect.
I will summarize.
And they've asked very respectfully several times to just let them finish their discussion. That's all they want.
I will...
This is our discussion. It's our discussion.
It is our discussion.
No, you have your discussion, and now it is their turn for the floor.
And we've spoken.
Please respect it.
We've all spoken, lady.
Okay. I think it's...
It's time.
Please pause for a moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I promise to summarize if we have trouble, if people have trouble hearing, I promise to summarize what the discussion is. Okay. So, does anybody else have any comments that have already spoken that they wanna say again?
Barry, you just speak.
Barry.
Barry.
Okay. Barry?
Yes. I don't wanna lecture. I don't wanna argue. I really wanna just share my, you know, my heart. I've heard what everybody has said here. I have read every email. I know somebody commented that they didn't get a response. When you get 100 emails, you can't respond to all of them. I hear you, and I know in your heart, you wanna get rid of the masks, and that would be my goal. I cannot see getting rid of masks by the start of the school year.
Please, Leah. So are you in favor of a phased-in approach, then, similar to what was discussed earlier?
Yes, I am. I wanna hear what the superintendent can put together for us. I wanna have strict mitigation for places where there is no masking. I wanna still have masking on buses, for example. I agree with no masking when kids are out on the playground at recess. We've proven that outdoors, we can all do very well with or without a mask. In the classroom, I feel if people have not had their vaccines, and it's not a matter of picking and choosing, we can do this on the honor system, it's not... I mean, if we say no masking or mask optional, then I feel like we are prejudiced against the people who wanna mask, and they're gonna be...
Why?
Can I keep talking, please? Can I please keep talking? Okay, I have a mask on, so I'm not feeling well, and I don't wanna get everyone else sick, okay? I'm trying to be a good citizen, so just...
All right. We need to hear Barry. We need to hear from Barry.
I'm very happy. I'm very happy to go outside and take my mask off. Inside, I feel very comfortable, and I hope you guys feel comfortable, so I don't give you something that you don't want. And I'm vaccinated. Now. Now. Now.
You know, there's...
We need to finish this discussion. Please, let us finish this discussion.
The other option is, we could just end the meeting and postpone this till August.
Let's let them discuss. I'd like to at least hear their reasons. We're not helping. Let them discuss. They owe the decision.
Thank you. Okay. Barry, so I think what I hear you saying is you would support a phased approach as well.
That's correct. I wanna see the school year start. I wanna see where the Delta variant is going. There's a lot of unknowns right now. Last year, last year at this time, we made a false promise to the community. We said, let's open up the schools. And then we had a backtrack, because things changed. We need to be flexible. We need to... I'm sorry you guys don't believe in scientists. I'm a physician, I'm a scientist. We have to believe the science.
It's not.
The Delta, the Delta variant is coming. Everybody who is hospitalized in Missouri right now that did not get vaccinated, that is now moving over... I can't talk.
I know, I know.
I can't say what I wanna say.
All right, so I am gonna... I think we all agree that we wanna get to mask optional. We all want to get there. I think how we get there is what we're struggling with right now. What I'd like to ask is if we have four people that are willing to let Dr. Hunt and the administration come up with a plan to get us to mask optional and phase it in.
Sandra.
Do we have four votes for that?
Sandra, before we go there, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So I just wanna clarify. So it sounds like Katie and I, Angela, can I count you on this as mask optional?
Yes. Yeah, that's what she's saying.
So if three of us were mask optional?
And Erin?
I don't know if we have Erin.
And Dr. Hunt.
No. There's seven votes here. There's seven votes. Please let us talk. So I don't think we have four. I don't think we have four to go.
We don't have four.
I said mask optional for middle schools and high school.
Right. So that's my point. We have three that are mask optional, we have three that are not mask optional. Erin, to me, is in the middle right now.
I would like to find middle ground.
Yes.
I talked to each one of you yesterday individually, so that we could try to find middle ground.
So I guess what I'm saying is, if we can find a middle ground, I would say at a minimum, we start with, as people pointed out, six through 12, so middle school, high school, are mask optional, no doubt.
But is that what you want?
We have four votes.
You're voting for mask optional, or you're voting for vaccinated?
Sixth grade, are we talking age or grades? So I think we're talking...
Age. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right. Great, great. So middle school and high school, we are in agreement with four of us. That would go mask optional. I think what we need direction on, if I'm hearing folks correctly, is that we would like to know, you know, whether it's rolling positivity rate, whether it's new cases per 100,000 in the population. We need to know some metrics that Dr. Hunt and the governing bodies are comfortable providing to us to say what milestones we need to hit in order to go mask optional for elementary.
That would all have to be part of their plan.
99.997...
That would have to be part of their plan, too, right?
Yeah.
So what I've heard Dr. Hunt say is that he would like two weeks to come up with a plan to get us to mask optional.
But right now, do we have... I think what you're asking is, do we have consensus?
At least four.
At least mask optional for middle schools and our high schools.
Correct. And if we can do that, I think that will help the community at least understand that we're in the... No, no, we're talking about grade. Grade six through 12.
So not all sixth graders are 12.
I understand. I understand. But based on what I'm hearing, we're in...
I'm not willing to go... I would like to hear from the Health Department before I make that kind of...
I understand you're not one go, but I think Erin is.
I think you have four that are.
I think you have four that are. That's my point.
Is there anybody else? Are any of the three of you willing to say, are comfortable with mask optional for grade six through 12?
I would like to hear...
I'm just curious.
I would like to hear from the Health Department, that the administration hasn't had a chance to talk to the Health Department yet, and about the layers of the strategies.
You also gotta think about the operational side of that. You've got middle school students.
I think Dr. Hunt is trying to say...
Guys, quiet.
You have to consider the operational side of this, and the reality of a sixth grade as kids are turning 12, trying to monitor that. That's just...
And that's why I'm okay.
It's not operational.
And that's why I'm willing to say mask optional for sixth...
And that's... So that might be... So then you would strengthen the other strategies around that sixth grade level?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, probably the mitigation would be the same at six through 12.
I guess I'd like to see the administration's plan.
I would as well.
Instead of dictating to them certain pieces of it, because I wanna give them...
Dr. Hunt asked us for guidance.
He asked us to tell him which plan to go in free. That's what I heard him ask.
Well, so what I'm saying is, I think we're saying mask optional plan for six through 12, and then we will perhaps consider the phased approach for elementary, just as a starting point. Well, mask optional, of course. Mask optional, of course, but those are the two we should evaluate for K through five.
Do we have... Do we have four votes for mask optional, grade six through 12? Do we have consensus? Do we have four people willing to go to mask optional for grade six through 12?
We do.
I'm willing to do that.
Yeah, I think we do.
For middle schools and high school.
How about elementary?
Okay. All right. So do we have four people willing to go mask optional for grades one, K through five, or pre-K through five?
You have three.
I'm not quite there yet.
I'm not quite there yet either. Okay. All right. So...
Which of the four?
So...
The two S.
I'm not... I was trying to have a conversation here. I'm trying to guide a conversation. So...
That's right.
You need two weeks to come up with a plan, a phased-in approach for elementary level, pre-K through elementary.
Yes.
Okay. So our next planned meeting is August 10th, I believe?
So right now, just for clarity, we decided to go mask optional for middle schools and high school.
We have agreement to go mask optional for sixth, grade six through 12.
We have elementary school parents who are deciding on where to have all their children in.
I understand. I understand. I think you have heard, we do not have four votes to do pre-K through elementary and mask optional.
We cannot leave the discussion to August 10th.
No, no, I agree with that.
But let me finish. I can't even finish a sentence.
Can we have people leave who are disruptive? I'm feeling very uncomfortable, and I can't hear, and I really wish that the people that are disruptive would be quiet or leave. They can watch online. They don't need to be yelling at us in person.
The week of the 26th?
Are we available to come back together to see the plan in two weeks? That will be July 27th?
Is this a plan for K through five, then?
Yes.
A phased?
A phased.
A phased mask approach for K through... So are we saying we have consensus for at least a masked approach for K through five? Sorry, a phased approach? A phased mask approach for...
We have four people willing. We don't know what it looks like. I don't know. I can't say anything.
We're interested in seeing what the approach would be.
We will bring that to you, but you're also gonna get a lot of information between now and then.
Absolutely.
Okay, so right now, we're saying mask optional for middle schools and high school. That's fine, right now. We have enough for that.
Yes.
And then we're saying that we would like to see a phased mask optional approach for grades K through five.
And what's gonna determine that? What's gonna happen?
I would also like to understand better what that, I mean, what that mask optional looks like, right? Through grades six through 12. I understand that they would not have to wear a mask, but what are the other mitigation strategies that are gonna be in place? I just wanna make sure that we understand what that is.
I think the mitigation is that...
For the phased-in, or what it would look like if you went mask optional?
I can't hear Angela. Hold on.
So I'm clear. You wanna know what mask optional would look like in K through five as well?
No, phased in.
Or phased in.
How to phase it in, and what would be the reasons to phase it in or out?
Got it.
And my understanding is we can continue to improve other strategies as well. So even if we go mask optional for six through 12, we might be able to do other things as well, and, you know, remove other layers as well, right?
Oh, to remove other layers?
Yes.
I didn't understand.
Yeah. Because that's just one layer. Mask is just one layer, right?
We hope our community is going in a positive direction, and things are gonna improve, so then we can remove some of the mitigations if the community spread stays low and goes away.
Yeah.
Right, because this is a community project.
It is a community project.
Dr. Hunt?
Erin, I have one question.
Dr. Hunt?
Sorry, Angela.
I know that two weeks would be ideal, and I think that there are some parents here that are looking to make decisions with their elementary kids. Is there, is it possible to maybe gather information earlier, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, you're gonna be like, this district is terrible.
No.
But I just wonder, you know, because I do think that, especially with the little kids, you know, there are other options for schools that maybe parents would be looking at, and we, you know, have kinda had this conversation throughout the, the year, and I know you weren't privy to that, because you weren't sitting at the table, but I think our goal was, at this, this meeting, was to try to give parents some idea, and we've, we've done that for, you know.
So, I would just ask that, conceptually, we can put that together, but probably a lot of details that need to be flushed out. And what I hear as priorities is, how would you phase, what metrics would you use to phase, those seem to be the big questions, and we'll try to focus there for the conversation.
Okay, but two weeks is?
So two weeks is preferred.
If you wanna push it up, push it up, we'll do the best we can do.
So, I wanna hear from the board about availability, can, can we even have availability in two weeks, I just wanna make sure.
Can we set two dates, to Angela's point, can we set one for next week, next Tuesday perhaps?
It's pretty quick.
I'll try to pull up a calendar, it's hard to.
I still don't know what the mitigation is gonna be in high school and middle school, not the way with mask though. Are we gonna mask on the buses, are we, well, well, what I'm just saying.
I have to, I have to bring that.
Right, well, that's what I, that's what I wanna know, that's what I wanna know.
Just ignore them, just try to ignore them, Erin, okay, so, I hear that one week is not quite enough. Is, is, is.
If you can get the board together, we will bring you.
I'm not sure. So do we have seven people that can get together on the twentieth? Nope, so we don't have people that can get together on the twentieth.
I'm not here.
What about that whole week, is, is there any day that week, the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, if any availability?
I can make any.
The next week is better, the next week is better for me.
Twenty-sixth, the week of the twenty-sixth.
How about the, how about the twenty-seventh?
I mean, we don't need everyone here, we just need a quorum.
We do just need a quorum, but I think we probably need, I, I would like to hear from everyone, if possible. How does everybody else feel?
I think it's important to have everybody here if we can. For whatever date it can all be there.
We don't have everybody until the twenty, do we have everybody on the twenty-seventh, let me ask that, do we have everybody on the twenty-seventh? Yes, you're gone.
I can try to call in or do something, but.
What about, are you gone that whole week?
We're supposed to be on an RV trip.
That whole week? You're, you're out of time, that whole week, Katie, the whole week?
I'll come back, I'll be back the twenty-eighth.
You're back the twenty-eighth? What about the twenty-eighth, you're gone the whole week, right, but you could dial in.
Yeah, but I don't know that, like, do. You actually, you, Angela, you can't.
Calling in from on vacation.
You're not allowed to do that, I just watched, I just went through the training.
Can we make concessions that we can do it at one time, because of this unusual, well, I mean.
It's a loss, dude.
I don't, I don't believe you can.
I don't believe you can.
So you are, Barry, you are, next week, you are also not available to even dial in?
No, I'm, I'm not gonna sell reception, if I'm older, I wish you were in Wisconsin.
So Angela, which, which date the week of the twenty-sixth is best for you? Yes, if you can dial in, even if, any, any day?
Or Saturday.
No, I'm, I'm also gone the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, I'm happy.
But the twenty-eighth?
And you cannot dial in when you're on vacation, you could dial in, but you cannot vote.
I understand, I understand, but we can also make a commitment, we can also make a commitment that we get everybody heard.
Everybody.
Everybody heard, right, I'd rather.
I'm not, I'm not willing to, to lose a vote, I'm sorry, no, I feel like if we're not, I don't think that, no.
We, we don't have to have an action item, we can have, we can give.
We're hitting Monday morning, and you're going through Sunday. Monday or Sunday.
I, I hate to go into the, the week of the third.
Second, you hate to go into that.
I hate to go into the week of the second. What about on the, what about on a weekend?
Well, let's be honest, your votes don't change.
What's that?
Your votes don't change.
Well, it depends on the plan, I mean, for me, it depends on the plan.
I'm, I'm asking, you could persuade me, but I wish I could allow you to persuade me, I really would wanna hear, you know, I'm, I'm not helping. No, I get it, but your, your, your plan isn't gonna, your vote isn't gonna change to go unmasked, that's the only thing that's, they've already voted.
Right.
They have a, you have a.
Unmasked to these players.
You, so you're not gonna get the, so.
I cannot get to unmasked to these players.
Not at all?
Unmasked in the K through, no, K twelve.
So you can have a meeting on these, these events. So it's either the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh.
But Angela's not here.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's next week, I'm sorry.
The twentieth, I, I would prefer.
Next enough time, I mean.
How about the twenty-second?
Twenty-fourth.
How about the twenty-second?
That gives me more time.
Katie, Katie, Erin, how about the twenty-second?
Do the best I can, alright.
Steve and Angela, how about the twenty-second? The Thursday. How about the twenty-first? Twenty-first? A Wednesday, are you here the twenty-first?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
I won't make any day work.
Twenty-one. Okay, twenty-one, we can get together, okay, so the board can get together again on the twenty-first of July. Okay, so, I'll summarize quickly, we, the board has agreed to mask optional plan, I'd like, and we'll get up, we'll understand exactly what that looks like, but it would be mask optional for all students at grades six through twelve, and we will get together again on July twenty-first, on a Wednesday, to discuss the pre-K through five plan.
And you're, you want me to bring, you want me to bring. So I'm clear, we're bringing you metrics that we would look at, we're bringing you mitigation strategies for a phased approach, potential timeline, I'm assuming?
Yes, right.
And you also would, did I hear you say you wanna hear what mask optional would look like in PK through five as well?
Yes, because I would think that would be part of your phase in, right, I think we all agreed, and, and I also heard we wanted to hear about quarantine. I also wrote down quarantine, what, what does quarantine look like? In both scenarios, correct, team, in both scenarios, team?
Yeah, across the district.
So.
I just have to say, if we're gonna do mask optional, we're gonna have to up some of the other mitigation strategies.
That's why I wanna see the plan.
We can't take everything away, we can do as, 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 as was stated before, it will be a step by step by step. We can't just open with no protection.
Well, and I think there's gonna be.
It's still here, it's not going away.
I think there's gonna be families who do one online learning, and are gonna be really upset if everything is mask optional in elementary, if there's not a vaccine.
So we'll see the plan, okay, so, so, Katie, so teams, everybody, everybody's good here, to end this discussion, everybody's good, we're six through twelve mask optional, we're gonna see what that looks like, because there's details that we need to understand of what that looks like as well, and we'll hear about grades pre-K through five in a phased masking approach, I think we all agree the goal is to get to a mask optional.
Yeah, and just to be clear, we are not requiring masks outdoors, correct, for any, any grade?
That's a good clarification, okay.
I mean, just to be clear, because we haven't said that. Right, for, for.
Don't discuss with that.
Are we saying that?
I don't think we said that, we are not saying.
We did not, we did not say that. We did not say that, can that be part of your plan, can that please be part of your plan?
Outside?
So, so, team, Katie, can you hear me? So, what happens outside will be part of the plan as well, is that okay?
And buses.
And buses.
Outside and buses, Katie, you, so, part of the plan would also be what happens outside and in the buses.
I want, we're not masking children outside.
We didn't agree to that.
Why would we not agree to that?
I kinda think that.
I'm just asking that that be part of the plan.
We're not able to have a discussion.
I'm just asking that that be part of the plan that's presented.
Well, but the plan is to, no that, or no masking outside, right?
Yeah.
I did not hear that.
That's, that's part of the guy, that's part of the CDC guy.
I thought CDC guidance was that outdoors, you're okay.
Everybody good outside? Okay, okay, so, I'm gonna add to that, we've got four votes for mask optional grade six through twelve, no masks outside, at all grades. Okay, and then we will meet again on the twenty-first, we'll meet again on the twenty-first.
Yes, there's a request for clarification, we're saying, are we saying that all grades do not need to mask while they're, when they're outdoors?
That's what I heard, yes.
Yes, okay, yes, so I added that to what we have four votes for, okay, so I, I would like to recommend we take just a quick recess, and then come back to our action items, is that okay?
Can we take, uh, five minutes? Five minutes?
Sure.
Okay, let's recess, and we'll come back in five minutes, seven twenty-five. Thank you all.
All my stuff here, because I'm so uncomfortable, I can't.
I'll bring up the first.
Much later than 11:00, I think.
Can we get a cup of coffee going?
Yeah.
So, let's see if we have, well, actually, we have to go through informational reports still. Are there any questions on the informational reports that were presented? The suspension report, any questions, any concerns?
No.
That we need to talk about?
We can check that one out.
Board committee reports. Do we want to go through board committee reports, or would we like to defer that to the next?
Next meeting.
Give updates.
I haven't, none of my committees have met.
Okay.
Finance would be the only one, I believe, and we can probably do that next meeting.
Okay.
We have, well, we have the referendum.
We have the referendum meeting, we have the Dreamway.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Steve, what?
I'm sorry, I mean, very, or Dr. Altriler. Did you say? Oh, I was just going to comment, you know, Leah and I have a really, Leah, we have a really short update that we should give the rest of the board, right? I mean, they're.
The finance committee met, we got a pre-budget, you'll see the pre-budget soon, and that was great. The end.
Yeah. And they made you the paper, paper bid, that was a real.
There was a paper bid, it was reasonable, you'll see that soon.
Doctor Hunt.
For paper for the district, yes.
Okay.
But I think that will come at the August meeting, not the 21st meeting.
Correct.
Well, if it's ready, it's ready, right?
Come in August, yeah.
Coming August, okay. Another committee that met was the referendum committee. You want to give a quick update there, Barry?
We already talked a little bit about the stoplight. It would have been nice if we had the help of, you know, our neighbors, but we're going full speed ahead to see if we can make it work. I think having ingress and egress from Lake Cook will really help a lot, so we don't just have to depend on Hart Road ingress, egress. So, we're working on that.
Things are.
So, just for clarification, I would prefer anybody that's listening, that you're talking about the egress and ingress from Barrington High School onto Lake Cook Road.
That's right.
I didn't hear, but.
As well as ingress and egress from Hart Road, which we already have the stoplight on.
Right.
So, in terms of our, you know, timelines, we're really doing a great job. We are currently with the middle schools and Grove, and we are actively working on getting community input on what's going to happen with the elementary school. So, I, you know, I hope nobody's here, but I hope people who are watching that, people will add their two cents, because they did a great job with the high school. And then, we're going to be presenting in just a couple of minutes, a proposal or the bids for the high school boilers. The boilers were included in the referendum plan, they were always going to be done, but unfortunately, a couple of boilers have malfunctioned, so we're moving it up a couple of years. This is a great time to do boilers, because we don't need heat in the high school. So, we need to prove that, so we can continue what we've already kind of, I mean, we've kind of put the cart before the horse, because there, we've told people with the, that it's going to happen. So, we're going to be passing that today, because we need to get that going. So, those are the big referendum things.
Okay.
Any questions to the boiler bid recommendation that you have, so, great job, Barry.
So, we'll get there in just a minute. I'm trying to remember, did we also get the timing of the ventilation? Did you give that to us yet, or, I mean, we've got the approval to use it for SRFU, but we don't know when the ventilation's coming?
Right, so, we're actually working on specs for that. It's something that we can do during the course of the school year without disrupting the educational experience for students. But, we're working on, you know, there's been some supply chain issues on things, we're hopeful that that's not going to be a major factor, but we believe that we can do it during the, hopefully, the first half of the school year. But, we're working on that right now, I don't have an update for the board.
Okay, great.
That's what we're trying to get, get done.
Okay.
So, it's not probably going to happen before the school starts?
We can't do it before school starts.
Winter break?
We may be able to do it during the course of the school year, so it doesn't have to necessarily coincide with the break period, because it's work that we can get done without disrupting the educational environment.
Thank you.
Excellent.
And then, just for clarification, the stoplight itself is not part of the referendum, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
We're going to have to fund it from another source, if we do go to that point.
Got it.
Okay, that's, just want to make sure that's clear.
Any other questions on the referendum team? Okay. All right, any other committee reports? Can we take just two minutes on the Dreamway?
Would you like to do that today?
You were able to attend that, or do you guys want to hear that next time?
Do you want to hear it today, or should we do it next thing?
I don't know, you probably need two minutes?
Two minutes. So, I went with Dr. Hunt, this was his last official job as superintendent.
Harris, Dr. Harris.
I'm sorry, Dr. Harris.
Don't get, don't let.
I'm ready, I'm ready, use them, I, I knew, our new superintendent. Dr. Harris, the Saturday of the end, last of his duties, we went to do the, to be part of the ribbon cutting for the Dreamway. As everybody thinks familiar, Barrington 220, the Park District, and the Barrington Village all contributed, and we did a great job of cleaning up Flint Creek from Langendorf all the way to Hart Road. Our dream is to continue and do it on the other, west of Hart Road, but that's another discussion. We were, I was overwhelmed at the number of village members that were there, from the BADC, the Baycox, Citizens for Conservation, the breakfast, or, I'm sorry, the Noon Rotary Club. But, what I want to just mention, and I hope people will try to walk the Dreamway, because it's really beautiful, especially the Langendorf Park, is that we were honored by Cook County. There was a resolution, each of the government bodies got this resolution, basically honoring us for our foresight, and for the fact that we're finalists for the Governor's Hometown Award for this work that we did. So, this is going to go to Berry 220, I will, I'll give it to Janine, and we can keep it in our clippers, but.
Yeah, you can send that around to us, Janine, scan it in, and that would be great. It sounds like it was a great collaboration across a lot of different organizations.
As they say, it takes a village, and we had the whole village together, which was phenomenal.
Awesome. Awesome, okay. How about the consent agenda? Can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Let me just read through, I promised I would read through everything that's on the consent agenda before we vote. We have exception bills from June 2021, we have NSLP exception bills from June 2021, bill lists from July 2021, activity accounts for VHS and K-8 for June, the 2021 Wage Payroll Report from June, the Treasurer's Report from June, the Revenue and Expenditures Report from June. We also have on the consent agenda, minutes from special meeting on June 15th, open session meetings from June 15th, closed session meetings from June 15th, and open minutes from the regular meeting on June 15th. Did I say 16th the whole time? Okay, thank you. My head hurts right now. Okay, we also have a revised personnel report, so everybody got a chance to take a look at that today. And then, we have also the list of authorized depositories, that's on the consent agenda. So, could we take, is there any discussion, or can we go straight to a roll call?
I just wanted to mention that we still have not okayed the June 5th, the June 1st meeting, so just so everybody knows, but that's something that's got to happen. In terms of the minutes, we deferred them last meeting, I'm not sure we're going to get to the whole discussion today, we may have to wait till August, but that's still on our to-do list.
Wait, what is it, 20 days to approve the minutes, is that right?
We actually have like 30 days, right? 30 days.
Is it 30?
So, we're already.
So, we're ready in a year.
Yeah, so I think we've got some extenuating circumstances here, where we're trying to have a board discussion about that, so I, I'm thinking we're probably okay, but maybe you could.
Not without precedent. We have had other times.
Thank you. Okay, so, can, any other discussion or questions? Okay, how about a roll call?
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We have two action items, I want to ask that we, do we want to talk about board protocols tonight? I'm sensing no, that we don't want to do that tonight.
Board priorities?
Protocols, I'm talking about the action items.
Oh, I'm okay putting that.
Can we move that to the next meeting, to July 21st?
I think we should.
Yes.
Okay.
On the 21st, or you want to?
Or do we want it on the 10th?
Point of order, is July 21st just talk about masking, or you planning on having a full meeting?
Well, let's, let's, let's discuss that.
I think it should just be masking, because it's a special meeting.
Okay, special meeting, just, only one action item, do we want to have an action item on there to approve the plan? Does that have anyone address it?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
Will it be prepared to be approved, or will it just be a?
We will do our best.
Okay.
We will do our best.
Not that far away, so, okay.
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 The board protocols are what we just went over, right, in our meeting?
Correct. They are, but I'd like to.
Re-go over again.
I'd like to go over them again, and.
Yeah, because we haven't formally approved them, right? We merely went through and updated.
So, if everybody could take a look at those and see if there's anything they'd like to adjust for those, and we will bring those back on the August 10th. I've got to make something else, or I'm going to forget. Okay. I think we need to take the action on the boiler bid.
Boiler, yes.
I think that's timely.
Yeah.
So, do we have a motion to approve the boiler bid as presented?
Hey, I'm.
Second. And do we have any, have any discussion?
Do you have anything more you want to share with the, how we did it? I do have one question, there was a huge difference between the top and the bottom bid, I just was hoping maybe you'd comment on that. I mean, I'm, as a homeowner, I'm always a little nervous when there's a huge difference taking the lowest bid, are we getting quality, are we, are we getting the best?
That's a great question.
Best service, so, I just was hoping that you'd comment on that.
Right, that's natural, that's a natural question to ask. What we do with every one of our bids is actually vet out the low bidder. So, when we get to this type of a bid, all of our referendum construction bids, are, we have our construction manager review in detail the bid response. Have conversations with the low bidder to make sure that they understood what the scope of the work was. We do reference checks to make sure that we believe that they can actually do the work. So, there have been times where the board has heard recommendations that certain bids be rejected, they were low, and they missed things that were not, you know, that they should have bid on. So, we actually look for that, and we looked for that in this case, so every time that we're doing that, we're double checking to make sure we're going to get what we expect from our bidder.
So, can we call the vote?
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari.
Yes.
Angela Wilcox.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
And has this work started already, or not yet?
No, it will start until the board has approved it.
I wasn't sure, okay.
Yep, so, but we, we will have it done before the heating season starts.
And it won't affect school starting in terms of the kids coming and going?
Nope, because it's, it's all happening down the boiler room.
Great. Okay, so, we got through the action items, we'll come back to confidentially closeness session minutes at the end, we had our public hearing, we had our COVID protocol discussion. What's left is discussion items for board priorities, and the policy for public comment, and agenda for August 10th. Do we want to, do we want to go through any of these discussions tonight? Anybody want to advocate that, or can we move them all to the 10th?
Is there a lot else on the agenda for the 10th?
What else on the agenda?
Yeah, so, do we want to take a look real quick what we have on the agenda for the 10th? We have an SEL update, the tentative budget, and adopting the board priorities, which maybe we'll be able to do in one meeting, but, I don't know. Might be good, I don't know, if you guys could stomach it, could we do the board priorities on the 21st, or no? Just so we can have a discussion first, and then vote on it on the 10th?
I guess, I'd like to know if there's any big red flags with what we have.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's good to.
As we start to align things and start the work of the district, so, if you're comfortable and we're to a wordsmithing point, we can push that to the 21st, but if there's any major concern the board has with what we have there, I guess I'd like to know sooner rather than later.
Do you want to maybe put a deadline for us to email you, if we have?
That'd be good.
That'd be great.
So, say by?
By Friday?
Friday.
About Friday, this Friday?
We're talking about priorities, right?
So, if you've got any concern with the board priorities, and then we can bring it up for discussion item on the 21st, then we can vote on the 10th as per plan. That's sum it?
So, the one thing about it.
What's that?
So, there's one bit about it, like, when we were, the draft is what we talked about, but like, in years past, we've kind of looked at last year's and kind of made sure we included some of those things and looped them over, and we didn't do that. So, I don't, I think there was a, you know, we changed the methodology, so I think there will be some differences. I didn't look at it like wordsmith, I just kind of glanced at it, because I didn't think we'd get to it tonight.
On the agenda, you have last year's and this year's.
Right.
So, and we had conversations about how to.
How to make it match up better.
A little bit.
Because that's kind of, I think, a discussion, right?
So, we said we would continue to have a discussion on the 21st, but get your, any feedback or concerns by this Friday, whatever this Friday is.
Does that mean we're going to discuss it, and then we'll action it the next one?
Okay, on August 10th. Does that sound okay to everybody?
So, we're looking at board priorities final, that PDF, right, in terms of feedback?
Mm-hmm.
No, no, draft.
The draft.
Draft, I'm sorry.
Final was last year's.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, I don't see strategic plan.
Okay.
The only other comment I have is that, you know, the level of stress at this meeting was such that, you know, we're not ready to make good decisions tonight, I don't feel personally, and I don't want that to happen again next week, because I don't know what that will bring, just saying. I'm hoping it won't bring that, but.
Yeah, I think.
Cautioning.
It's very difficult, I found it very difficult even think, when we have people just screaming at us.
So, am I? I don't know if we have a policy about, you know, what happens in this situation.
We just need to set very clear expectations on the front of the meeting, and how that will be handled.
Can we also discuss moving to a bigger venue?
Let's, let's go in there in just a minute.
Yeah.
So, are we all okay if we set the precedent at the beginning of the meeting, that we're not going to allow for a lot of constant feedback, so we can have our discussions, and?
By saying we're not allowing for it, we're saying we're going to remove disruptors, is that what we're saying?
Remove disruptors, or stop the meeting until, until they, until they stop. Okay? All okay with that? Okay, now, another venue, is there a possibility on the 21st of moving to a different venue, or do we have the same issues with restrooms at the middle schools all summer, is there a possibility of going to the high school?
I look this way, middle schools are going to be a problem.
Right, middle schools are fenced off right now.
Middle schools, and it's only a week out, I don't think we're going to have bathrooms and things functional.
What about the high school?
High school auditorium, is that a possibility?
High school, I don't know.
I would look to people that have been in those meetings before, I don't, cafeteria or auditorium.
The cafeteria, I think, at least Angela, I've been in there.
I've been in meetings there.
It's very, very difficult to hear. We could, we could try it, and it's just very, very difficult to hear. I think you can hear better in the auditorium, but the auditorium puts us up on that stage, which is, I mean, it's up to us, we just know that we would not be like this, it would be, we would be on that stage.
Why does it have to be on the stage, why can't it just be on the floor in front of the stage?
There's really no.
They're singing.
There's an orchestra pit, and then there's chairs.
Yeah.
That's how it is, and they're not moving chairs.
Oh, okay, got it.
Theaterium, yeah, so, we don't want to be in the pit.
No.
So.
Got it.
What about, I know you guys have looked into this, I'm probably making a comment, like Roslin, we have a stage at our gym, and then the gym's giant, and it's not a full huge stage, have we thought about any of the grade schools?
Yeah, we went through these, and there were issues with everyone that was central, unless we want to go out.
Is Roslin not considered central?
It was Roslin's issue.
I believe Roslin's was parking.
Well, there were also things being stored in the.
Oh, in the gym. That's right. But that, well, but that may have been resolved.
Well, Roslin, Roslin and Countryside are the same layout, right?
Are you saying that Countryside is too far away? Is that what you're saying? It's not central enough?
I don't think people care.
I think we could. Yeah, I don't think people care about.
Yeah, I don't think people care.
Countryside has terrible.
How about you let us work on that?
That's a good idea, let you guys figure it out, and see what the choices are.
Is that, Katie, did you hear that comment? We're going to let them look into other options and.
That works, and let us know.
Okay. What else?
Fair.
Go back to here. So, we're just looking at other things on the agenda, is?
We're still under discussion items?
Yes.
All right, I jumped right to COVID protocols, there was one personnel piece that I know we've discussed, but enrollment at North Barrington, first grade, class size is 27. We're looking to add an FTE to bring down our class size.
Yeah.
We believe we can manage that within our current budget limits, but wanted to bring that to the attention of the board.
Let's do it. I don't have any concerns.
No concerns?
Okay.
No, let's do it.
The other thing I, I don't know that we've talked about during COVID protocols.
Oh, can I ask my open session question about that first, I think it was to?
Just a minute, because I wanted to ask one more COVID protocol question, if that's okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, sure, mine was just that enrollment.
We didn't talk about in our plan attributes, what it looks like for the teachers, and I want to make sure that that's part of, I don't think I have to say it, but I just want to make sure that we include what's, what's happening with the, with the staff, as part of that plan, too. Is that okay?
Yeah, I would argue backwards, not saying.
I don't mean to go backwards, but I'm just looking through.
Yeah, and I, I believe I communicated, I had an initial conversation with BEA, and we'll, we'll circle back with them, kind of based on the direction we're heading, and get any feedback.
That makes sense.
Can you run through that, Sandra, really quick, that COVID protocols, I think it includes quarantine process and?
Quarantine process, the prevention strategies that were listed there, and how we're, how we're utilizing them. I wrote down outside, but we already agreed to outside, so we don't really need that.
Bus?
Bussing. I also wrote down if it's possible to get any vaccination statistics, if it's desire, if it's desired to have that, if they're available. What did I mean by HD? Is there anything else that you guys thought needed to be in there?
What the metrics are.
Yes.
And of course, the K-5, or pre-K-5.
Yeah, we will have, just so you know, we'll have question, we'll have conversations around screening and testing as well.
Oh, great, okay.
Because we still have tests that have been given to us that are available for nurses and schools, right?
Bio, bio, bio nets?
I mean, on a limited basis, has that changed?
No, we still have those.
Since the new year, but still?
Yes.
Anything else that we wanted to make sure is part of that? I had a couple of things for the next meeting.
We're not talking about testing children, right? What was the question about the test?
We will be having conversations about that. I know some districts, one of the things they did from mitigation strategy was, they moved over to use the shield testing, random testing for students who opt into that. So, they did random testing for students who opt in as a mitigation strategy to offset some of the masking.
Unvaccinated children, is this what you were talking about?
I think it was random unvaccinated children who.
Or any children?
Opt in.
I think Barry brought up mitigation strategies for middle school and high school, right? Due to the mask option, right?
Okay, these, these plan attributes have to be for both plan.
Oh, right, yes, of course.
What I meant, though, last year during school, when school was in session, I believe our school district was, I don't know, given is not the right word, some tests, so let's say a kid in school starts feeling sick, coughing, having symptoms, it's possible for the nurse to test them at the school, was what was happening.
We still have those.
Some of that is available.
So, symptomatic test?
Symptomatic testing at school.
With parental permission?
I don't know, would this, would parents call?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and if you test negative, then you're, you know, in a better situation than not quarantined, obviously, or to not, to know the contact tracing.
Right. Right.
Situation.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I had a couple of things for next, the next meeting that people had brought up to me, but Erin, you wanted to ask.
Oh, yeah, just the, just the question, I think, to Teresa about the jump in enrollment in first graders at North Barrington? Like, is that something that was, that we saw in 2019 too, or is it kind of new to?
Would have to go back and look.
Or Craig.
We always get jumps. I remember there was a jump at Countryside, there was a jump at Roslin, there's jumps here and there. It all really depends, year by year, yeah.
And I know.
This year was like COVID and it's really hard to look at first grade because they were kindergartners last year. A lot of kindergartners do private kindergarten anyways, so it's not like we have three years of data to see where they were two years ago. So I don't think you're going to be able to get a good, good data.
I was just curious about North Barrington.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, but like if we looked at fourth graders, then we could look at them from third grade last year and second grade two years ago and we could see a trend. First graders, we don't have a trend because there's no, there's no pre-data to know that.
I would say every year we have some grade level that we end up having to address.
Erin, if you look at it, we actually, this has just gone up since the starting of it. We did have three sections last year and we moved it down to two sections for this year.
Oh, I see, so we're kind of back to.
So we're actually kind of.
Back to baseline.
Still under, yeah.
And I know we've had a, Craig was telling us we had that kindergarten.
Yeah.
Maybe pandemic related jump, right? And then, did we ever get that enrollment to come back? I know we were down a little bit and we had expected potentially more as we got closer to the, starting this going.
Watching the numbers, we don't have a recommendation to add any additional sections. The one that we achieved last time is still working for us. We haven't seen that study incline at the same rate that we were seeing. It slowed down a little bit, so we're still okay at this time for kindergarten.
Oh, not just for kindergarten, but the whole, where were you like 700 down at the beginning period last year?
Yes.
And we're still around that or did we come up?
We are still down.
Down about 700 or so. Okay. And we don't really know why, right? It could be pandemic related or it could be moving.
Yeah, really.
I suppose you can speculate.
I think you can make an educated guess on that.
Pandemic related, right?
I just had a couple of things, but I think we'll be able to wrap this up by 11. For the next meeting, I had, some folks had asked for an update on the SEL hiring, so I think we already talked about that earlier in the meeting, just want to make sure that we get that, that update.
Do we just want to include that with the August 10th SEL presentation?
We will, we will include it.
Is that okay? We still have openings, so we're looking for psychologists, which many districts are, I have many people reaching out. Okay. School psychologists.
Who will include kind of like specific plans, right? Like, oh, are we doing universal screening with students and how will that work and other kind of programs?
Yes.
Bilingual availability, that kind of thing, right?
That will be included.
That's all part of it, okay, cool, yeah, looking forward to that.
I was going to bring this up through my president's report, but I thought I better just be quick. But I got a lot of questions from the board members on the hotels for triple I. So there's been some discussion about whether or not we have a budget for, to pay for hotels, but whether or not we should, board members should feel comfortable making reservations for hotels. So I just wanted to know if, if anybody has any objections to board members having their hotel paid for? Because if you attend that AAA conference, there's things that go well into the evening and then start early in the morning. So if there's no objection, I want board members to feel comfortable to use that budget and not be, and not have anybody treat it differently, but if we need to have a longer discussion on it, then we should add it as a discussion item.
We have, we're of adequate funding in the budget.
We have adequate funding in the budget. I just don't want anybody to feel like that's, if we have to have a conversation about it. We, we will have to vote, we'll, we'll have to, you know, present the plan and vote on the plan. I just want to make sure the board members feel comfortable making those arrangements.
Yeah.
And be consistent. Yeah, I, I've never been very comfortable with the, you know, it's just down in the city. I mean, I don't think people need to go to the city to go down there for. That's fair.
Agreed. I've chosen to stay, but I'll pay for my own, I'll pay my own way.
Others feel the same?
You know, I think if it was in Springfield, it wouldn't be an issue, but it's in Chicago, so that puts a different light on it, which, you know. But if a board member wanted to stay and couldn't afford to stay, I think that's not right either, you know? So it's a little bit of a mixed, you know, our staff, we're paying for their hotels and we're not voting on it. That's part of their budget and their education, you know, to go to these conferences.
All right, well, I guess everyone please think about it and then as they, as we, we reviewed those plans we brought forward for us to vote on right before, before the conference. So we'll just leave it to come up that way, but if I'm hearing, we've got, it's going to be mixed, so as you make your plans, we have some people that support it and some people that don't, so.
There's no issue with using the budget to pay for our registrations, right? Like, we can.
I guess.
I don't think there's any.
Okay, it's more, it's more the hotel aspect.
That's right.
Okay. And then, and one other thing, thank you for your patience, team. There was a couple of things that were said in public comment that I wish that had summarized at the end. There was a couple of comments about testing, testing the students to attend school that I didn't quite understand. So is everybody okay if Dr. Hunt follows up with that person who said they had to be tested to get into a school?
I think he was talking about third graders being.
That was the other question, that was a different, that was a different person.
That was all I heard.
Are you talking about COVID testing?
No, it was academic testing.
Extended self-contained, right?
There, one person talked about extended self-contained and another person talked about academic testing to get into school. It was very early, it was very early on. Yes.
I think it was. It would make sense to follow up then, if it was unclear.